All right, we ready? Good evening, everybody. The August ninth meeting, 2020 meeting, 2022 meeting of the Needham Select Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which provides that meetings of public bodies may be conducted virtually as long as adequate access is provided to the public. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment only with respect to the public comment period and the publicly noticed dangerous dog hearing. This meeting is being recorded and all votes will be taken by roll call. So I just want to start by saying that my apologies to the town. I understand that due to my diagnosis right before our meeting on Wednesday last week and all that kerfuffle, so that I could participate in our board retreat, we neglected to record. Although we did live stream our discussion last week, my apologies. And these things happen and we are all figuring out how this works. And so I thank everybody again for convening virtually, given that we have a couple of us who are in different states and out of town and other things going on today. So here we are. The first item of business we have is a matter of public comment. And I just, Kristin, do we have our Mr. Pollack here? It looks like if we could move him over.
Yep, he's on and I just moved him over for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, thank you for recognizing me and I've got a brief comment that I'd like to make. My name is Richard Pollack and I have been a resident of Needham Heights since 1992. I urge this board to reject the memorandum of agreement for 100 West Street scheduled for a vote this evening or soon. The proposed use of this property would be a significant departure from that originally approved by the town. Far more public comment and debate are needed to reveal the significance of this proposal to the residents of Needham. I have experience on the topic under consideration as both of my parents have resided in independent assisted and memory care living units. As originally proposed and is accepted by the town, this property included independent living as well as assisted and memory care units. Although the aging in place model is compelling, the manner through which this proposal has evolved is concerning. The developer now proposes to rename the independent living units as assisted care units. Eliminating the independent living model conveniently obviates the requirement that the applicant reserves a proportion of the units as affordable housing. The so-called assisted living units planned by the developers seem nothing more than cleverly mischaracterized costly luxury independent living units, complete with fully functioning kitchens and occupied by residents who do not yet require assisted care. Unless the residents require bathing, feeding, or help with other tasks that define assisted care, then won't these simply be independent living units? The one-time influx of unrestricted funds specified by the agreement might, on it, on the surface, seem attractive for the town. The financial contribution to the town is, in fact, a paltry sum insufficient to offset the burden imposed on the town by the elimination of affordable independent living units that would have otherwise been required. Even if this total financial contribution was fully directed to subsidize rent in affordable independent living units in high-end facilities, the principal amount would subsidize fewer than 20 units and for only one year. Is this fiscally responsible for Needham residents? I think not. In my opinion, this agreement neither is fiscally responsible nor in the best interests to residents of Needham. In summary, I urge this board to reject this memorandum of agreement. I thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollack. So I just, we will be discussing this item later. So I'm going to reserve comment actually for when the board does have a discussion of this item. I do just want to say that we are not voting anything tonight and we in fact do not have an agreement in front of us tonight. I know that there was a draft that was included in our materials, but we don't have a current agreement in front of us. So thank you for coming tonight with that comment and we will provide more information later. Okay, the next item that's on our agenda this evening is a proclamation for opioid awareness day. So I am going to turn to Mr. Nelson and ask if he is able to proclaim.
I am indeed, thank you, Madam Chair. The proclamation states, whereas international overdose awareness day aims to bring communities together to remember without stigma those who have died from overdose and acknowledge the grief of the family and friends left behind. And whereas observance of this day is an opportunity to raise awareness about the risk of overdose, promote discussion about prevention and share information about support services. And whereas addiction is a disease that touches families in every community. The epidemic has claimed the lives of thousands of Massachusetts residents and affected countless other family members. And whereas those affected by overdose are our children, our parents, our siblings, and deserve our compassion and support. And whereas the town of Needham, Massachusetts does affirm and acknowledge the pain and the hardship caused by drug overdose. Now therefore be it resolved that the Needham Select Board hereby proclaims August 31st, 2022 as overdose awareness day in Needham.
Is that a motion? So moved and seconded, any discussion? I know that this is something that many of us know people who have been touched, I think all of us actually, by this and some of us in our own families, mine included. So if all are in favor of the motion, Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Keen? Ms. Braille?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, it is proclaimed. I'm looking, this is not really a matter of public comment. I can see Ms. Shannon's hand up. Did I miss that during public comment period?
No.
No?
During the proclamation.
Um, so I'm good, I'm going to leave that as it is right now and Karen, we'll catch up. I know that, and thank you for the work that you do in this area as well for the town. But this was not planned as a discussion. So thank you, everyone. And I know that there are some families in town, in fact, who are appreciative of this proclamation. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing, the dangerous dog hearing, which is continued. It looks as though we have Ms. Rizal to bring over and I don't know, is Mr. Stewart, Attorney Stewart here as well? He is. Attorney Heap is, or is the chief here with us tonight? Am I missing him or is he not here this evening?
I don't believe he's here this evening.
He's not here, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So I, this is a dangerous dog hearing. Many people in town have been following this and I understand there's a couple of people who have joined us in the room to hear the discussion at this hearing. I want to thank Ms. Rizal and Mr. Stewart for coming and for the latest updates we've had. I'm going to ask Attorney Heap if he can just sort of brief everybody with where we come from on this and where we are at the moment.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Not, not much in advance of the select board's last meeting two weeks ago, Ms. Russell Aga provided some new, some new pieces of information for the board. I think those were provided sufficiently close to that meeting that there wasn't much of an opportunity to digest that information before that meeting. So I think it was resolved that we would continue that session of the hearing to your meeting tonight. In the interim, I've had an opportunity to review those documents and I just can sort of outline briefly what they are. There is a letter submitted to the board from Concord Animal Hospital that indicates that Axel is scheduled to be neutered in October of this year with the deposit having been put down for that neutering. There was a report from dog behavioral analyst Vera Wilkinson. If the board members may recall, one of the requirements that was contained in your order from April this year was that the dog owner retained and consulted services of a behavioral analyst. So that is, that report is in and that has now been done. And finally, and maybe most importantly, Ms. Russell Aga provided an insurance policy for the dog. Another one of the requirements from your April order was that the owner obtain insurance in an amount not less than $100,000 insuring them and the dog against any losses that may be or damages that may be incurred in the future. And that policy has now been, been provided. I've reviewed the insurance policy and the report of the behavioral analyst. I can, I can certainly answer any questions that the board members may have. But at least on its face, those are, those are submissions that were required back in April that have now been provided to the board. I guess on
Go ahead.
In terms of, in terms of next steps, based on those submissions, I took the liberty of preparing a new decision for the, for the board to consider. The April order, I think, contains a number of things that the board would likely want to remain in place going forward with respect to the property and the dog. But those, that order was styled as a set of things that the dog owner had to go off and do. For example, the dog owner was required to erect fence around the perimeter of the property sufficient to prevent escape. The dog owner was required to provide the board with an insurance policy. So those are things, and there's a couple others that now have been done. So I've prepared a revised order for the board's consideration that, that does a couple of things. It adds the new information that the board has received among the list of evidence that is part of this hearing. And really just in terms of the orders, changes the, really the tense of what you're ordering from something that the dog owner is required to do to something that the dog owner is going to be required to continue to do. So the order that said they were required to erect a fence, I have revised to say they're going to be required to maintain a fence going forward. The condition that required them to provide an insurance policy has been revised to require the dog owner to maintain an insurance policy on an ongoing basis into the future. I think that's particularly important with respect to that one because the policy that they've provided is a term insurance policy that is good for one year beginning several weeks ago in July. So I think we want to change that to require that they maintain that insurance on a continuous basis going forward. We're doing it every year as needed in the future. So I can walk through, if the board is interested, I can walk through the changes that I've suggested to in the revised order. But that is sort of a general description of the, the nature of the revisions that I've, that I've put together.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I think at this point, I'm going to open it up if there are in fact questions from the board that are related to the order. I am hopeful that all board members have taken advantage of the opportunity of viewing the various videos that were provided by Ms. Rizal Aga's behaviorist. You know, I think it's fair to say that it's clear that Ms. Rizal Aga has worked quite hard with Axel. But Axel remains, from, from my view of those videos, a challenging, large animal. And I personally would not want to see him off a leash unmuzzled out in public without Ms. Rizal Aga right there. Let me turn to Mr. Nelson, please.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Chris, I just wanted to know if something in there along the lines about it renewing the insurance every year? Just making sure that it doesn't lapse? Like there's no, maybe putting that specific language in there, I think would make sense just so there's, you know, so it's continuous and we make sure that there's no gaps in between.
That's a, I think that's a good point. I attempted to anticipate that, that comment and as currently drafted, the revised version that is, is, that I prepared says that Ms. Russell Aga is required to renew such insurance as needed prior to the expiration of any term of coverage in order to provide that the insurance coverage required herein remains in place uninterrupted.
Okay, thank you.
Also rereading this, Chris, I can see that we've sort of consolidated to ask that Ms. Rizal Aga comply with all the recommendations contained in the dog behavior evaluation. I know that there were several recommendations in there. One of the key ones, I think, was the requirement that Axel and Maya both be walked singly, you know, by an adult who was able to maintain control over the dog while walking. That to me was a particular concern in, in the points that were made because I think the public would be certainly most concerned about that. I don't know if that deserves a particular mention in this or if you think what we have is sufficient, so.
I, I think it has. So there, in the revised version, there is a general condition that Ms. Russell Aga comply with all of the recommendations in that report. There is a separate component as well that specifically calls that out. It says that the, the dog needs to be walked individually by an adult, separate and apart from any other dog. So that's, that's effectively in there twice, once expressly and once just as a catchall.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Marcus?
Yeah, and then the last thing, I just want to just understand from Ms. Russell about it's going to be her walking it and not, I would say, a lot of these meetings that we've had, some of the things that have happened have been under kind of her dad's watch, you know, when things have kind of happened here and there and things have been open there or things like that. So is he one of the people that are, is able to walk the dogs or would it just be herself? And I think that's a question for you, Ms. Russell. I just didn't know what that looks like in your kids. I don't know how old everyone is, but in what's considered an adult, like what age or what do we, what's the language in there, Chris?
Eighteen years or older is the definition of adult in, in the order.
Diana, are you able to comment?
You're on mute.
Sorry. So what has been happening since the whole thing started is that I'm the one who's handling Axel since Maya is more calm and quiet. So my daughter Sarah has been doing that. When we went to Mike for training, Laura says 17. I didn't have anybody, you know, like to walk her. So but Maya is more, you know, like she's, she's more calm. She doesn't do anything. So I'm always responsible for, for Axel. And now since my daughter is here, so she's the one who, you know, like if we're going somewhere, you know, like for training. So she's handling Maya, but I'm the one who's always handling Axel. The other question is that if, if they are to walk you, you mentioned to be separately walked separately, like in a time manners or like separately with two different people? Like each one?
Different people.
Different people, so they can, they can walk at the same time, but it has to be different people, not each one like walk with one and then bring them home and then go back and walk the other. Chris, they can be together as long as with two people.
So the way it's currently, the way it's currently drafted is that actual shall always be walked alone. That is separately from any other dog and by an adult that has physical responsibility for Axel and no other dog.
Sorry, can you repeat it?
So as drafted, I think that, that would, that would require Axel to be walked alone separately by, by an adult, just Axel and separately from other dogs.
Sorry. My, my connection was really bad. I didn't, I didn't hear answer. Would you repeat please?
As the order is currently drafted, I believe that would require Axel to be walked both by one adult and separately from other dogs. So I think that would really, as it's currently drafted, that would require Axel to be walked separately from Maya.
Chris, I think we lost connection.
All right. Let me turn for a moment, I believe we still have Attorney Stewart. Let me turn for a moment to Ms. Braille for her question.
Thank you, I think Attorney Heap just answered it. It was my recollection that most of these incidents happened when the two dogs were together and that part of the issue was that the dog's behavior changes when he's with Maya. So I just wanted to make sure that the dog that Axel will be walked without Maya. I think that's an important distinction.
Okay.
I think if the board were to leave the, you know, my revisions in place, I believe that would have that effect. That would require the two dogs to be walked separately.
Mr. Borelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And that was my comment as well that, you know, that was my understanding when there was aggression when they were together. I guess I just want to comment to Attorney Stewart, you know, to his client that we've come very close on multiple meetings to euthanasia. It's been an exhausting process that I don't think should have been this dragged out and exhausting. But there's a lot of, I'll be, you know, trying to be polite and call it miscommunication, but not following what we really tried to have your client follow in order to wrap this up soon. I am comfortable looking and thank you Attorney Heap with the language in this order, I can support it. But you also have to understand that this dog is not going to have, I think, the life that this dog should be having with all these restrictions and conditions. But that's a choice of your client and I think it's very clear from this board, if there's one misstep from this order, it's going to be a very different conversation in my mind next time. So that's where I stand on it. My initial comment was about walking the two dogs together, so I'm finally getting it separate. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. You need to unmute, please.
You did back on, all right, so I'm unmuted. Alex is a magnificent dog. It's amazing, I watched through the videos. But I am really torn on this and I'm very concerned because these magnificent dog, these also incredibly dangerous one. In the controlled setting of the vet office, they challenged him over with four different fake animals, effectively desensitizing him. And on the final dog that they did, he was incredibly aggressive. And had any, had a real dog been in place, there would have been a huge fight. Well, it wouldn't have been a fight, there would have been an attack and they would, the dog would have been throttled. So seeing that video, I thought was actually extraordinarily chilling. And I'm really not comfortable allowing the situation to stand and let this dog be out in the neighborhood. I think it's a very dangerous dog, seeing that would be chilling. But knowing now we're on attack number four, definitely three, run four, the dogs. I would actually be, I would entertain other options. Thank you.
Not sure what other options might be.
Well, I mean, one is, do we say, we euthanize a dog humanely on September 1st? If the dog's not around, if it's been rehomed, that'd be fine. But I don't think, I think for the safety of the neighborhood, we're saying we're going to wait for one more incident. Then I'm not sure that's responsible. I am, I think it's really, we're asking the neighbors to put up with a lot, knowing there's a dog that we hope we've contained for a while, for a long time.
Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I think going along with, with Kevin said, the video and, and the last, I think seeing that interaction, you know, knowing where we are and where we got to and all the things that Ms. Russell has done and that's admirable. But I think chilling is, is a good way to put it and the fear of the neighborhood. If everyone saw that video, I'm not sure if they did, I'm sure it wouldn't be much better than what it was previously. So that's definitely cause for pause and something that kind of puts a little a red light up in my eyes because like we said, do we have to wait for this to happen one more time? Before we do something? And like the next time could be a time that could significantly hurt another dog or do something worse. So we, we risk that? I've been going back and forth with this since this hearing and everything has begun. And it's been really an emotional roller coaster of non-compliance and things that have taken way, way, way too long and a lot of missteps along the way. And, and I don't want to say, Diana, that you haven't done anything right because you have, you, you've been trying to do what we asked you to do, but in the way that it's been done. And then seeing the videos and seeing the reactions to that Axel has had is, it's frightening. And from, you know, from your neighbors and the concerns and, you know, people that come to these meetings and have to live with that, it's, it's something that I wouldn't want to be around if I was someone in that neighborhood. So it's, it's a lot to think about. Thank you.
Ms. Fitzpatrick and everybody, I do recognize that this is a public hearing. I think we have a couple of people who are related to this hearing who are in our chambers. They don't know if any of them wish to speak, they don't, or if there's anybody who's attending online who would wish to speak. Looks like there is a hand in the chambers. Are they at a laptop or how does that work?
The owl should pick up.
Them as a speaker? So if you're in the chambers, if you would like to walk up to the table and start to speak, if that's.
Hi, my name is Lori Walsh and I live on Booth Street, which is just on Hillside School. I have actually seen Axel and Maya before together when I was walking my two golden retrievers and we had a little bit of an interaction with dogs, charged my two dogs, but I went forward towards the Axel and Maya. Fiona was calling them back and they went back, so thank God there was no incident there. Since this has all been going on, I have not walked down to Hillside School anymore. I don't feel safe in my neighborhood. I don't walk my dogs that way. We always go the other way now. I used to love to walk up Hill West Street because of the exercise that I would get doing that. But again, I don't feel comfortable doing that. I also think about the dogs, I'm a dog lover. And I think about the dogs and I think about what this is doing to the poor dogs. Dogs are, they're meant to be out with people and to enjoy life and they've become caged animals. And I don't think it's fair to the dogs. But I also am more concerned about the neighborhood. You know, I am concerned about the owner's ability to control Axel. If he were to get out of control, could she hold him back with this full power, walking him by herself? I know that I couldn't control a large dog who was aggressively going after something. So it concerns me about the ability of the owner to throw the dog when it is out in public. I, I just know, I can be the voice of the neighborhood, several neighbors. And by the way, there've been six attacks. There's only been four that have been recorded to the board. There's actually been six attacks. And, and none of the neighbors feel comfortable walking that way. It's just unfair to the neighborhood that we cannot feel safe in our own neighborhood. And I know that if those dogs are allowed to walk around the neighborhood, none of us are going to feel comfortable taking our dogs for a walk. I thank you for your time and thank you to the board. You really have been very patient with this whole hearing and I appreciate all your time and effort that you've put into this. And, and, and I just thank you all from the bottom of my heart. And, and, and I just thank you all from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. I don't know if we have anybody else who wishes to speak this evening?
Madam Chair, there are no other people present wishing to speak in the chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Other comments from board members? Ms. Razol?
Madam Chair, I apologize. There was one. Oh, or have you closed public comment? There was more, one more member who now wished to speak.
I, I'm willing to let one more member speak. They took the time to come.
All right. Thank you. I live on Bob's Drive. And yes, my dog Max was attacked by Axel and mine. And I, and I've said it before, but it's unbelievable what it sounds like to me and to my dog that's so scared to walk out, I mean, pee as well when he's anyone that looks vaguely like any kind of husky. He goes crazy because he's so scared. And, and I just, yeah, I, I can't believe that the dogs are going to be allowed to walk out again around that, around our neighborhood. Not just our neighborhood. I know the lady over there lives across from us. You know, she, she holds a breath every time she walks out and thinks, well, you know, is anyone going to come up or are they going to be there? So it's not just our neighborhood. I know it's the rest of West Street as well. And particularly, you know, the lady whose dog was attacked by Axel, the last one that was, yeah, the sixth one. And so I just, I think it's sad, but, but all concerned and particularly the dogs, like Maureen said. And, but it's just not mine. Thank you for letting me speak anyway.
Thank you. Ms. Razul or Mr. Stewart, Attorney Stewart, would either of you like to speak?
Madam Chair and, and select board members, Attorney Robert Stewart. Attorney Cohen is still primarily responsible for the representation of Ms. Razul. I have family visiting and was unavailable this evening. I, I certainly will echo the sentiments of everyone who's spoken as to the amount of careful, patient time and energy that this board has put into the considerations around Ms. Razul Aga's ownership of, of Axel and Maya and, and her attempts to be compliant with our kind of global understanding of all of the concerns of the select one, all of which are valid. That said, I think that with Attorney Heap's edited version of the order, it reflects all the progress that has been made. And, and, and I think it's important to note that, that the progress that has been made is not just based on Ms. Razul Aga's interpretation of what needs to be done, but the interpretation of the professionals of the veterinarian and of Ms. Wilkinson. And so we, we would not be before you this afternoon if we didn't think based on our experience and, and what Ms. Razul Aga has done so far, that these measures now in place and agreed to are not going to be successful. There's no reason to believe based on what's, what's happened in, in the community since the matter came to rightfully came to the attention of the board, that there's a likelihood of recurrence. So I would simply say that whatever missteps occurred in terms of miscommunication, in terms of lack of prompt response, I, I, I hope that our mutual efforts have, have cured those. And that we, we sit here tonight, this afternoon, with a redrafted order that reflects what, what I believe we, we can all see is a safe and fair resolution to all concerns. So we would encourage the board to continue the progress that's been made here to to recognize the prior, you know, that, that Ms. Razul Aga and her family obviously love these dogs, want what's best for them and are committed to the safety of the neighborhood. So that's, that's all I would like to say. And I can certainly try to answer any questions. And Ms. Razul Aga is available to answer any direct questions of any of the board members.
Any other comments from board members? Mr. Keen?
Yeah, Attorney Heap. Could we have, is there a chance through a motion that would allow for rehoming or not? We can't rehome. But can we have a euthanizing order? And then say, what would the deadline that would give us an opportunity?
You cannot pursue it to state law. You, you, the board cannot order the dog to be removed outside of the town of Needham. That's one of the few things under the statute that the board, that the board cannot do. The board could adopt an order of euthanasia. And if it did do that, there would, I think, necessarily be a waiting period built into that based on, at a minimum, an appeal period for the dog owner to appeal that determination.
Okay, okay. And there's been six attacks now?
I believe that there are fewer than six have been documented as part of this hearing. I, I don't discount the report from the member of the public who, 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 who may have been aware of some that, that haven't been captured in this hearing.
Okay.
I was going to say, this board has always relied on members of the public to come forward if they had information related to this dog or to the dogs in this case. And so we are only working with the information that we have actually reported to us. This represents a very difficult decision, I think, for people. It is not, this board does not seek to euthanize animals. We also though are committed to the town. And I think, although I have heard Attorney Stewart talk about, you know, that conditions have been put in place to ensure safety. The answer is that we all know that those conditions work as long as everything works. And if something inadvertent happens, I, I don't think there's any guarantees. So we would need to be clear to the public that there are no guarantees. The orders that this board has put in place are to do our best to ensure what would be safety. And I, my sense of the board's discussion is that, while we very much appreciated the videos and appreciated understanding the sense of the progress that Axel has made, I don't think any of us are looking to be in a room with Axel. So, so it's a challenge, I think, for people on this board as we're trying to figure out what is the best thing we are hearing from the neighborhood. And certainly we have had letters from the neighborhood expressing their concern for their personal safety and their animal's safety in this case. Is the boards, Mr. Brawley, I can see you raising your hand, but my next question would have been, is the board sense that we want to go forward with the draft order that we have from Attorney Heap? Or do we want to ask Attorney create a motion along the lines that Mr. Keen has suggested? Mr. Brawley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And that was going to be my question. I wasn't sure if Mr. Keen was going to make a motion to for euthanasia, but I support, as I said earlier, that order that's in our packet, but I won't move that until I hear, sense of the board through you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Yes. Should we let Ms. Frail speak? Or do you want to go?
No. Hi, you go ahead.
Right. Ms. Frail?
This is so hard. Diana, I I just want to acknowledge all of the work that you've put into this. But I think it's also necessary to acknowledge that even this very last bid came late and came at a threat of euthanasia at our last meeting. And I'm concerned, I think that without this lingering threat, that we don't find that things move along at the pace that we had indicated months ago that they needed to move. So as, as much as it pains me, I, I know that people believe they're, you know, consider their pets family. And I, I hate to come down on the side, but I do think that I would agree with Mr. Keen. But it's, it's, I don't feel confident that we can expect everything to be maintained, whether through necessity, you know, and you, you can't always be there. Sometimes you do have to let other people help you and that's going to be in violation. But we do have the responsibility of caring for the neighborhood as well. And so as much as it pains me, I would agree with Mr. Keen.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Keen?
Thanks, Madam Chair. This is remarkably hard. I, I have two dogs. I love them. I'm a dog person. Sometimes it just doesn't work out. And one of the hardest things you have to do as a dog owner is to reassess. In this case, I think it's just too dangerous. I would ask Attorney Heap if he could craft a motion that would be sturdy and would be lawful for euthanasia, euthanasia, euthanasia. Thanks.
Mr. Keen, my connection was a little unstable at that moment. Did you actually make a motion? I'm not clear.
Yeah, mine, I guess I would say my motion is to ask if, well, can Chris Heap make draft a motion that we could consider? I would make a motion to euthanize a dog.
Would you want that motion this evening or at our next meeting? Where are you asking?
Attorney Heap, your thoughts?
The motion itself, I don't think it would be terribly complicated. I could put that together, I think, on the fly as, within a minute or two. I believe that we would need to craft an order to follow that vote, which I think we, we could do, you know, outside, so outside the scope of the public hearing, if that were the, the will of the board. So that can be prepared and served after the hearing is closed and after the board takes its vote.
Okay. So for me, you need, or you need a motion?
We would need a motion. I understand that that motion roughly recommends that Axel be euthanized and that the date be at least one month hence.
Yes.
With an order to be crafted by town council to that effect and to be served by the town manager's office after the conclusion of the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay. So there is a motion from Mr. Keen.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Brawley? Do you have any other thoughts?
I would just say, again, I'm, I'm repeating myself. I understand where members of the board feel. It is a tough call, a very tough call. I will just add, I remember at the beginning of this, of this hearing, we made it clear to Mrs. Zul that it's not the board's doing. It's really the steps that needed to be taken in order not to reach this point. And again, looking back, those steps were late. And we weren't taking that seriously. And then there were missteps along the way. And I think that's got us to this point, unfortunately. I'll be voting against this order. But not my job to convince people otherwise on this motion. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I think to say, just to correct little information, Attorney Cohen, when, when we started the first meeting, it was in April. And we, you, you put all the order with nine items. Attorney Cohen requested the time of 90 days. And I fulfilled that with 90 days. If we count, it was on April, the first meeting. It was May, the first month, June and July, I sent all the requirements were done. And I was not slacking. You know, there are a lot of things that happen when you try to accomplish, you know, like having, you know, like appointments scheduled and having, you know, like contact multiple insurances and make tons of calls. It doesn't happen instantly. So I was not slacking. And Attorney Cohen requested 90 days and I fulfilled that in 90 days. I just wanted to mention that.
All right, Ms. Razol, I, the 90 days was that's kind of new information to me. The board requested weekly updates. I think we, I'm not counting right now, but there may have been four updates over the last 90 days. So I don't really want to go into that, but I do understand that perspective that you just expressed. Any other comments from the board before we vote? I am still trying to figure out where I'm personally coming down. There is zero doubt in my mind, the board determined that Axel was a dangerous dog. The reason why the state has the provision that a board is unable to mandate rehoming of a dog is because the dog's been determined to be dangerous. Okay. And it would be not fair for us to put that responsibility in some other community. So just so that people understand the reason behind such a statute. With that understanding, any further comments? And then I will call for the vote.
Just another question, sorry. So in the last meeting.
Ms. Razol, would you like to be recognized?
Sorry?
Would you like to be recognized?
In what sense?
I'm not sure whether my connection is frozen or whether Diana's is. Diana, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. So the last meeting, you basically like gave me the ultimatum. If I don't fulfill the board requirements, that Axel will be euthanized. So I fulfilled everything. So why you're still requesting euthanizing him? If, if you are, were intending to euthanize him in the first place, you just let me know. I would have not gone above, you know, like the whole three months, you know, like going, working to just, you know, like fulfill the security and safety and all that. I would have done it anyways, you know, like just to keep the axle, but all this, this emotional stress in, 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 in pressure and all that while he's going to be euthanized anyways.
Thank you, Mr. Brawley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess that's where I am. And again, I'm not, I don't want to go over the top advocating here, but we did provide certain items that we wanted to be done. And it was my understanding, maybe a week ago, that it hadn't been done. And I was finding coming to the meeting and say, you know what? That's the last straw. But I think from what I understand and hearing from Attorney Heap, everything that we asked has been done. And therefore, that's why I'm coming out on the side. everything that we asked has been done, and therefore, that's why I'm coming out on this side. If it hadn't, be a different conversation. If this happens again, anything happens again, even not walk the dogs together. I'm ready to go to the next step, but that's where I'm coming down, is that I think that what we asked for has been has been done, accomplished, so that's why I stand where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That list, creating the list, wasn't a list to absolve you of what things have happened and to buy you basically a get out of jail card free. But what did happen is you made a request for an assessment done by a behaviorist. And I looked at those videos from the behaviorists. Is actually, that was sort of the information I needed to see that this dog was truly very dangerous. And was, I think, it's inappropriate to have this dog in the residential neighborhood. And this is too much of a danger for the neighbors. I don't think though doing the list was to get you free and to get this, like undo the damage. It was simply to try to get to a solution. And part of that was the videos that you guys sent. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Stewart?
Madam Chair, Attorney Cohen would like to join if you'd let him into the meeting.
Um.
I'll be dialing him.
If you can move Attorney Cohen over.
Thank you.
Is he showing up as Jeremy, or is he already moving over? I'm not sure.
Yes, Madam Chair, I think it's under Jeremy. He was just moved over.
Ms. Frail?
Thank you. I think part of the issue that I'm having with moving forward, as Mr. Borelli suggests with the original draft, is that I don't understand exactly how we would have any oversight into the control over which Diana works with this dog, except for something bad happening. So I guess as much as I, I really do, you know, understand how much she's put into this. I guess the issue is that if this dog is a member of the family and a member of my family was threatened, and I was to provide, say, weekly updates, like I would do that without repeated urging, without threats of.
Who are you? You've got to be kidding me.
Wait, wait, wait. Mr. Cohen?
Is this really happening that I had to come in for vacation because you're doing this? This is bullying. Make sure I get to be heard, and I'll be quiet now, okay? Will you make sure I get to be heard?
I will absolutely call you when you raise your hand to be recognized after Ms. Frail finishes.
Okay, I'm on, my hand's raised. I can't raise it on, I'm on the Zoom on my phone. I don't know how to use it on my phone because I'm on vacation, so my hand's raised.
Thank you. Ms. Frail?
Thanks.
So the issue that I have is that I don't understand what mechanism of supervision we would have except for a report by the neighbor if something else happens. I don't see how we move forward without doing this throughout the entire year and having, you know, the police chief involved every week. Because, and that is because we haven't had the weekly updates that we were supposed to have. I understand that these things, there are many things on this list that do take time, so that's not my criticism. I just feel that because the reporting has been delayed in almost every instance, the moving forward presents a problem for me.
Oops. How do you, muted?
That's all I have to say.
Okay. All right, thank you. Attorney Cohen, if you can be calm, we would be happy to hear you.
Good evening. I'm coming to you from my car on vacation because I just got some disturbing information. So let me say this. If this board does anything tonight other than recognize that my client's done everything she was supposed to do, that she spent tons of money. I don't know who this guy is talking about the videos. He's not a dog person. He doesn't know what he's talking about, as most of the board hasn't. And I'll tell you something else, this whole order where she has to check in every two weeks, that's an unlawful order. We agreed to that at the beginning, but to try to use that as something that you somehow have authority over, this is a board that's overstepping the boundaries, and you're bullying her now. There's been no human contact, no human, I can't believe we're having this hearing again, no human aggression. Now let me say this. Everything you're telling me is nothing that I've been made aware of recently. We've even got an insurance policy that said with the, with the actual language, says, don't worry about it. If this dog gets loose, there's coverage. I mean, you saw that. I've never had a client, 150 hearings, never had somebody do everything like this. This is more than usual, and have a board respond like this. So here's how I'm going to respond. If anything in this order changes tonight, I'm bringing my army. I'm going to my media people, and I'm telling them about this need them board, and how you're overstepped your bounds, and this is unheard of what you're about to do. I know you might not be familiar with doing this, but I am, and you're wrong, and you're way off, and if this order changes tonight, I promise you, through the courts and through my army, I will bring the pain because this is wrong. This is so wrong what you're trying to do tonight. And this is not a threat. This is when government oversteps their bounds, which you're doing. You need to be punished and called out. I've been waiting for a board to do this. I will absolutely do it. I will name every single one of you. She put in a ton of money, and you're complaining because you didn't get something every week? That's not part of what we have to do. The, show me in the statute where it says you have to produce something every week. We went above and beyond the statute. And if you do something now to harm us or harm my client, now you've harmed me. And I'll tell you, I am ready to go. You know, you see me, and if you go back on your word now after she did all of this, I will absolutely make this my mission to expose what this board has put us through over the last three months. The bullying, the constantly turning things up, no, we want this, we want this. This dog didn't bite a person. So I know none of you have been here before, and I know this is our first hearing together, but you haven't seen me yet, okay? So if I have to go to court with this, I promise you, you're all going with me. Please don't make the wrong decisions tonight. She's done everything she was supposed to do. This is unheard of. And this is why I exist, because government cannot take our property without a fair hearing and without following the procedure. Now I've let you slide on the procedure. But please, don't make the wrong decision tonight.
Thank you.
Sure.
Attorney Stewart, I think your hand is still up. Is that correct? It's from before?
It was from before, Madam Chair. I've lowered it.
Diana, do you have one final comment?
Yes, I just wanted to comment about the updates. So I have been diligent in updating every Thursday, and there are emails prove that. It was just after the last meeting where I explained to Chris that it was a misunderstanding from my side that since I got the ultimatum, then, you know, like I just have to do everything altogether and present it for that. I did not understand, and I explained it was a mistake from my side, that I thought that I don't have to provide the updates until, until Attorney Cohen mentioned that, that Chris asked him about the updates, and at that time, my mom was in the hospital, and I worked, you know, like all what I can do to provide the updates and collect all that material.
If I can jump in for a second, after the last hearing.
Attorney Cohen, I haven't recognized you. Can you please wait a moment? We were listening to Ms. Rizal.
Yeah, that's just my comments about the.
Okay, thank you. I don't think the updates are the only thing. Mr. Borelli?
You know where I stand on this, and Attorney Cohen wasn't here when I said that I agree with the order, okay? But Attorney Cohen, we always talk before, we talk about coming to a board. You might not agree with how things have worked along. We don't, we don't agree with how things have proceeded. But to attack this board and mischaracterize things and make veiled threats or litigation, we have an army behind us too. I don't want.
I believe everything I said.
I'm speaking again. We don't want it to get to that point either, okay? No one wants to get to that point, okay? I, I agree that this order, despite your comments, the order that we received tonight that we went over is sufficient for me to move forward and not euthanize this dog. I don't know where the board, where the board stands on that. We're right in the middle of a motion and discussion. Okay, but I just want cooler heads prevail, move forward, and that's going to be the end of my comments to the vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from board members? All right, then I think it's time at this point to proceed with a vote on the motion we have in front of us from Mr. Keen. On that particular motion, I am, at this point, I do want to comment that I agree with Ms. Frail, that the only option that we have is an option that comes as a result of a bad outcome. Okay? All of the pieces that the board asked for were to help inform a decision, all right? The information has been, in many cases, late arriving, so Ms. Rizal is correct. The last piece of information was a piece of information that was suggested by Attorney Cohen way back in the beginning that we should get input from a behaviorist as it related to Axel. And that was the piece that came in at, I don't know, four in the afternoon before our last meeting. So things have come together. I think people have had a chance to look at it now. Different people have had different considerations. I do believe that Ms. Rizal has worked hard to get the information that the board asked for. She has kept Axel under control at the current time. She has made provisions in her household for containment of Axel. I think it's very important to recognize that I do not think it's much of a life for a beautiful dog like Axel. That would be my view. Okay, and that is certainly a factor. I think that I would hope that the owner would be taking into consideration with respect to this dog. Having said that, and I think it's also important to say, as Mr. Borelli said, depending on the outcome of this vote, if the board were not to vote in favor of Mr. Keen's option, that if anything else were to occur going forward, I have to say, I think there would be less than a nanosecond of discussion about what the next step is. So with that, I will call for a vote. Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Frail?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
No.
And the chair is going to vote no also in this case, so we will be three to two. But that does result in an order that will ask that Axel be euthanized, and we will see that order from Attorney Heep so that we understand all the timing and what that looks like.
How dare you? Who's Ms. Frail? Was she there at the beginning of the first hearing? Don't recognize me, but thank you for those of you who voted.
Mr. Cohen?
So disappointed.
You know, Ms. Frail has been participating and has been paying attention to all of these hearings, and certainly has read all the comments and input from the community. So.
Your decision, your decision based on assuming I'm not to handle it, so it's based on assumption. Is that what you're saying?
The hearing is over. My understanding is that it comes with a right to appeal. I know that we would.
Think about that. I have to think about. You don't talk to me about the court.
Hearing.
Kill a dog.
It's close.
Oh, watch what happens. Thank you all for the opportunity to fight you even more. Appreciate it. Have a great night, everybody. Horrible, horrible people.
All right. Thank you, Diana. We are very sorry.
I'm just so disappointed, so disappointed. You know, you know, things happen, you know, like, and I've been doing that because I want to contain my dog, not because I'm afraid of you, because I understand that this dog needs to be contained, not because you asked me, and I have been doing all my job to keep that.
Diana?
So much disappointment.
I appreciate that you have been doing your best to contain your dog.
Hold me. You should have told me. I would have not spent all this money. I would have just kept this dog inside the house and did different stuff.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda this evening is a joint meeting with Parks and Recreation. I'm going to ask if Kristen can please move over the commission who will be joining us tonight, and Stacy Mulroy, the Parks and Recreation Director. Kate, do you want me to turn it to you first or to Stacy? Or to Mr. Gerstle? Where shall we start, you guys? Our goal is to hear your priorities for the upcoming year.
Well, thank you, Mary Ann. We really appreciate you having us all here tonight. I know that Cindy Chastain is here, Stacy Mulroy, our director, our new commissioner, Fred Lavand has joined us, so thank you very much for having us all here tonight. We're very excited to kind of go over what's in the future for Park and Rec, and we appreciate any time and support that select board has for us. I can definitely say it's been an interesting year, and it's always one of the things of the challenges that we always look for in the ways that we can combat those challenges and then ways that we can better ourselves. So in the future, our programs can run smoothly, and we can always adapt and change on the way that's going through. Stacy, I'll kind of hand it over to you to kind of give a quick, brief update of where we are kind of right now, and then I can go into where we're looking, you know, for the future and why we have these plans in place.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, everybody, for having us. I appreciate the time the select board is giving us. We have in your packet, I believe Kristen has the CIP plan for the next, on looking at the plans that we submitted last fiscal year for capital improvements, and then figuring out if we need to readjust our priorities within those plans, in addition to a lot of the projects that have been coming to us, such as, excuse me, Action Sports Park, which is a skate park with BMX, scooters, inline skating, et cetera, pickleball courts, a larger number of tennis courts, and shade structures at the pool, just things like that. There's been a lot of groups attending our meetings in full force and sending us lots of emails. So the commission is now working this month to figure out the exact priority list on those projects as well as our playground priorities. I know playgrounds are a big topic in town. They are actually my bread and butter. They're my favorite thing to talk about. Don't get me started going because I'll keep going, but to figure out what we're going to tackle in what ways. So that's what the commission is working on right now. Chris?
So yes, as Stacy mentioned, it's all going to come down to a timing thing. I mean, we have our usual sports groups and groups that come to us for field permits and usage and everything like that, that we're now getting the newer user groups coming out, as Stacy mentioned. Action parks, skate park, pickleball, these are all things that, if you look in the news, they're everywhere, and these are things that we want to adapt and change as we can. Boy, we wish we could snap our fingers and have it done immediately, but we know it takes time and it takes the right resources and support to do these things. So yes, would we love to grant everyone's wishes at once? Yes, but we all don't live in that world. We all know that we have to take our time. We have to plan accordingly to see what the best way is because if we're going to invest in programs like this, and we're going to invest in complexes like this, we have to do the due diligence, not only at the Park and Rec, but with the other departments that we work with to make sure that we're doing it right and we're doing it properly. As you can see from the projects that we've had in the past is that you do the due diligence, and it then pays its way in spades way down the line, because you have maintenance programs, you have upkeep of certain things. So it's not that we don't want to do them, it's we do want to do them. We want to do them right. We want to make sure we do them in a timely manner that hits all those needs and wants. But looking at it, I mean, as Stacy mentioned, the action park, the pickleball courts, we came to town meeting this year to do a survey for our high school tennis courts. Those are the priorities that we're working on on a constant basis, looking to see what we can do to better those and to see what means that we have to say. looking to see what we can do to better those and to see what means that we have to say, looking outside the box of, can we do this? Should we do this? And where should we do this, as a matter of fact?
And, and, and I noticed that you've really focused on so many of your new programs, but of course, you're maintaining all your existing programs and field space that are going forward and, and fields in construction like the softball ball field, et cetera. So.
Exactly. I mean, at our, you know, uh, bi-weekly meeting, Stacy brings to us of what we're doing every single season, what programs are, are doing extremely well just by numbers-wise of people that are attending them, and then programs that to say, maybe we need to look at another way or another direction to do next season, because maybe the numbers aren't there right now. They could have been there 10 years ago, but maybe they're not there right now. It's something that we need to adjust and we need to look forward to. So Stacy is very good at pulling the numbers and showing what's working, what we need to work on, and what are things that we can streamline.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, do you, do you all want to talk at all about how the summer's been at the pool? Is there any observations or comments you want to make there? I'm sure there are people who are grateful that you were just able to extend your season um, and to all the work that Stacy and her team did to recruit all the lifeguards that have permitted us to be open as often as we are.
Sure, I can, I can speak to that. Uh, the extension of the hours could not have come at a better time since we had to shut down twice last week for some mechanical issues. So it worked out well. Uh, we were actually able, and I don't know that anybody in the Commonwealth were able to do this, we hired 80 lifeguards, um, all part-time basis, and we have quite a few communities around us that ended up uh, operating their beaches and lakes with a no lifeguard policy, swim at your own risk. So we were very, very fortunate to have such a strong um, and supportive staff that, you know, they really just keep coming back and they want to extend. Uh, so it's been, there's been a few hiccups in the last few days or so, but uh, that is not out of the ordinary. It has been a very hot summer with consistent 90-degree days in a row, and uh, it really puts a tax on the, the filter system. So uh, I cannot take the credit for any of it. You know, I have a lot of staff. I have full-time staff and a lot of part-time seasonal staff that do the bulk of that heavy lifting, and thank God for them.
And I was grateful to whoever hustled yesterday, once that part came in to get it installed, so we could get open again for the afternoon on such a hot, hot day.
Yeah, that was amazing.
Cindy?
Um, yeah, thank you. Nice to see everyone. Um, I just want to make sure you know how much we appreciate our staff, because they have done a terrific job. Um, and you know, with the incidents last week and then with the, the chlorination problem, it just seemed like we were going to end in a bad way, and it was quick, it was brief. And our staff has done yeoman's work, and you know, that is Stacy and Fabian and all of the summer staff, Devon. Um, really done a great job. Um, but I would like to build a little bit on what Chris said. Um, you know, I've been on the commission a really long time, and I have never seen the attendance at our meetings like we've seen in the last year. And it feels like a ground swell of interest in recreation. And we, we need help um, to think about it, because we would love to do the action park, and we'd love to do more tennis courts, and we'd love to do more pickle, do pickleball courts. We don't have space. So we know um, funding is an issue, and getting on the capital plan is, is an issue, but we can't even get off the ground without coming up with a space, and, and you know how, how precious land is in town. So we could really use some help if, if you folks can brainstorm and give us some ideas on um, what we can do, because it is an, there is an incredible amount of interest, and I do believe that these folks are coming to see you too, and they're calling you. Um, they're calling, I know they're calling our town manager, assistant town manager, I'm sure they're calling uh, the board members. And, and honestly, we're kind of suggesting that they do that. We're saying, speak up, because we need help to come up with something. So if you have any ideas, or if you think we can get together to brainstorm about this stuff, it would be fabulous. Uh, I'm just not sure what the next step is for us, because you know, we built the pool where it is because we couldn't find a space. Uh, and our pop-up skate park gets moved around because we can't find a home for it. So um, we need, we need some help, but there is a lot of interest, and the number of people that come to our meetings is incredible. And I'm sure Stacy can tell you how many emails and phone calls she gets on a daily basis about this stuff. Um, so I just wanted the board to be aware of the, the pressure. I mean, we call it goodwill pressure, because uh, you know, everybody is, is for the most part, very nice and respectful, polite, but there is a lot of pressure um, for these things to happen. So I want you to be aware of it.
I think people would like them to happen. They'd like them to happen yesterday, and they are going to be challenged by our need to find space first before we can find dollars then to implement. But yeah, hear all of that. Mr. Borelli.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the commission, Stacy. You know, Rosemary continues to be our priority, I think, for funding as far as recreation is concerned. It's nice. I know the lifeguard situation looked dire a while ago, and it's nice to see that you've been able to find ways to get lifeguards. I know that's been a problem across the state, so I think that's huge. Uh, my comment to Cindy, and yes, people have come to us on the action park, and that's been my goal, I think, for the past seven, eight years on the board. And I spoke with Chris briefly about forming uh, the Park and Rec Commission, as you did with Rosemary, formed a working group, um, you know, with members of your committee, a member, a member of your group, uh, maybe a member of the Select Board, some citizens, uh, because I've been hearing multiple locations or possible locations for the park all over town, uh, some of our, in our jurisdiction, some in yours. But I think if we can get together and then start, get the group together, start looking at these and, you know, feasibility of these different locations, narrow it down as we've done with other projects, I think of the senior center that comes to mind, when we looked at four locations there and were able to narrow it down. But I think to get that off the ground, that would be the, the best way, and we would support you uh, if you wish to do that. But I think that'd be a nice step. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to note that the board has several pending goals that you're going to go over this evening that involve Park and Rec, and um, perhaps adding to working with the commission on setting priorities is perhaps working on identifying space too. So just maybe affirmatively putting that in the goal. These are draft goals. And then just as a reminder, we also have in there evaluate expansion of off-leash dog areas, and I didn't know if that's something, Madam Chair, you would want to talk about while everybody's here.
Thank you. Um, and so, so speaking of everybody who's been coming to talk to us, we've also heard from the off-leash dog people, um, who while they will say that they're grateful for the dog park, uh, that's at Ridge Hill, they would like dog parks everywhere um, close to their home. And, and so I know that we have a test uh, case again going this summer uh, in the early mornings um, at Pollard. But, but that is also one that we would welcome the board's consideration of how it might fit. Uh, and are there any other places where it might fit? So let me go to Ms. Mulroy, and then if others have thoughts, we can come back to that. Stacy.
Thank you. Um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Um, I just wanted to not forget to mention the program staff. We did hire 80 lifeguards, but we also hired about 60 uh, program counselors that offer lots of programs to this uh, children of, the children of Needham. So I just wanted to make sure that I would be remiss without mentioning those guys too, because we have four locations and we're running programs in collaboration with the schools, and it's been a great summer. And sorry about that.
So, and, and one of the other things that you and I have talked about is uh, how we make those programs available to um, to people who need it on a very affordable basis, um, you know, in town. So that's another item that we've sort of talked about, how can we make that work better next year than it worked this year? And what, understanding what that universe of need really is.
Absolutely.
And I think that the schools are hopefully jointly committed to working on that question with us. It is a, a shared responsibility.
Yep.
So, Madam Chair, to answer your question in regards to the pilot program that we're doing down at Pollard for the, for the off-leash dogs, yes, we would love to have multiple locations that aren't on fields where kids play. Uh, because, I mean, I think we all know a certain park and forestry gentleman that wants to keep dogs off every single field that we have. I'm all for that myself. If we have a designated area where you could have off-lea-, off-leash dogs, I'd be all for that. I don't want them on the fields myself either, because those are playing fields and spectator where people are walking, that you don't want to hear the stories that come out of that, along with trash as itself is an issue right now on the fields. That's something else we really don't want to deal with. So if we could find some secluded areas or multiple areas around town that we could possibly look at a program like this, we'd be all behind something like that.
Yep, thank you. Um, I do think, as uh, Mr. Borelli suggested, I do think there's sort of some kind of a summit on this space to talk about. Are there any possibilities or where might they be? Heidi?
Um, this is not to do with space, so I hope I'm not changing the subject too quickly. Um, I just recently did my orientation, uh, my new member orientation with um, Park and Rec, and it was really a good experience, and they just have such a good staff there. I was really impressed. Um, I wanted to ask a question regarding evening use of um, Park and Rec properties. Um, what I'm finding uh, among at least the, the peer group of my 17-year-old, um, is that as the pandemic ends and the kids sort of come back together and start to reconvene in a real way, um, there isn't, at least during the summer, which is when they would be outside, there isn't really a place where kids can hang out together in the evenings. Um, one of the things that they like to do is go and play some pickup basketball or whatever. There are no um, courts with lights on them, and a lot of the courts that do exist and, and other fields and playgrounds are posted that the kids really shouldn't be there after dark, which I totally understand. I know that we've had some trouble with, you know, drinking and trash and stuff. Uh, but I'm curious to see if you guys um, have any thoughts on ways that these kids could reconnect in sort of an outdoor, non, you know, illegal substance sort of way uh, where they could recreate at night.
Stacy, I'll let you, or you want me to go first? Your choice. Oh, she's.
I'll go first. I'll go first. The, the kid is away, so I'll go now. Um, I, I agree with you, Heidi, 100%. We, you know, we, we don't have anything that's sort of like a teen gathering space, whether it's a teen center or a drop-in area. Uh, it's one of the department's, or at least the union's goals that we talk about regularly, about how we get that option, especially for our tweens and teens, because you know, they're, they're all too cool to do anything with us, but we, if we offer a space, they will come and hang out. So we're hoping to figure something out. Um, you know, it, it again comes down to space. I, I agree, playing basketball at night was one of my favorite things to do. Um, but where we have lights, there are no courts. And where we have courts, there are no lights. Um, and so that's a bigger endeavor of trying to figure out, can we add a court where there's lights? Because it's much harder to add lights where there's courts. Um, so it's something the department talks about regularly to try and how to engage, because they're our bread and butter. They are the ones that turn out to be our staff. You know, they're engaged with Park and Rec, and then they come back to be staff. And right now, there's a, there's a gap. It's too big of a gap between when they're doing our programs and when they want to work for us. Um, so we're trying to work on ways to close that gap, and we're open to suggestions too. Um, but it, it inevitably comes down to, but where? Just like a lot of these projects and ideas.
Okay, so let's keep that on our space list. It is related to space. Other comments? Kevin?
Yeah, hi, everyone. Um, thank you for everything you do. It's great. Um, it is appreciated. Um, I'm not going to talk about the dog parks. I've had my fill of dogs tonight. But um, a question about uh, pickleball and tennis courts. I've heard of some people saying that is, is pickleball gonna push tennis, the tennis community and squeeze them, or are we doing it wrong? And then another question is, how are we doing the test court survey? That was authorized at town meeting. I just don't know where we stand with it. Just an update.
So Stacy, I'll let you answer number two. I'll take number one. Um, in regards to space, it's, we're trying to fit 10 teams on a five-team field. We do it with the fields, we do it with the schools. So it just comes down to, not everybody's going to get exactly what they want. Everyone's going to play fairly in the sandbox. So if you take Memorial or any of the synthetic turfs, we have three to four different sports on that one field. It all comes down to how we can manage it, how we can schedule it, that everyone gets their fair share. Uh, and it seems that we're working in, do we adjust and, you know, change every single season? Because we know leagues grow and some, you know, take away. So it just comes down to how you're going to be able to fit all those pieces of the puzzle together. It's not perfect with, there's not one formula that does it, so we just have to work to see what we can do and manage the expectations of those groups, just like pickleball and tennis. You have one group that's growing, you have one group that is staying the same, that there's just not enough room for everybody. So we're trying to make it work that we're doing a pilot program for the pickleball uh, group, so we can kind of work it in and just, you know, get them a seat at the table, so we can work together with them as a group. So it, it's not going to be easy, but it's one of the things that if they want to be represented, that they have to work in accordance with the law, you know, the rules that we put down and work well with others that are on the same multipurpose courts that we have.
Thank you.
But I'll jump in and, and talk about the second question, uh, Kevin. We are working on the bid documents right now to send out. Uh, we, we're choosing not to go with any of our firms that we go to regularly, because I want a specific tennis firm, because of the interest in making that, those courts, there's so much interest in adding courts to that location. I want to make sure that we are going to a tennis vendor. So uh, we're working in conjunction with DBW to write, write the specs right now, and we will go to bid as soon as those are done.
Thank you.
Thank you. So when are we thinking we need to have this space summit and get together and talk? Do we have, are you getting in mind?
Last year. No.
So not last year, when? When would you guys like to be ready to talk? I know that you're getting ready to turn in a budget now. I, I suspect you're gonna get through that, but, but what, what do you think that timing looks like?
I would say let us finish the summer, get a little bit into the fall, and get through the budget cycle of what we have pushing forward. And then that's the time that we can kind of, you know, see where we are, see where we need to look at, and have joint meeting to see, this is what we're looking to do. This is what's on the budget, that I'm thinking, or, you know, mid-fall, unless Stacy's thinking later.
Stacy is. So, I mean, uh, but between all of our boards and our departments, there is no great time. But I think early November is probably a good time to think about it and see if we can get something on the books. Um, it gives the department enough time to handle the budget, also the town manager department, um, and then uh, a little bit of time before the holiday madness, I mean, joyfulness um, comes into play. So I think maybe early November, if possible.
Sounds good. Cindy?
I, I would respectfully disagree with my two colleagues and say the sooner the better, because I, I picture this summit being an initial meeting where we just throw out ideas and, and talk about it. And then come up with a plan to approach it. And honestly, I think the commission, without putting too much pressure on Stacy, because she's got a lot going on, um, could be ready to do that next week, quite honestly. Because we've been hearing from these people for a while, and um, it's not, there's not a lot of really new stuff coming down the pike. I mean, uh, the off-leash dog park, that is new to us, because we haven't really had that on our plate. But everything else, we've been hearing and hearing from these people again for a year. Um, I, I, I think we should start sooner rather than later, because it takes so incredibly long to get anything moving in town, as, as you know. Um, and these things aren't even in the, um, in the capital improvement plan. So, so we, we, right now, in my opinion, we've got nothing on the slate, and we've got people that are just bursting through the gates that would like this. And I think we need to show a good faith effort that we are considering it. Now, if we come back and say we can't do it, because we just can't make space and we can't manufacture something, that's one thing. But to not, to not move forward with at least attempting it, to me, feels like we're ignoring them. But um, but in the end, I would certainly acquiesce to the wishes of our director, because, you know, honestly, it's the staff that does the work, not the commission. So, and I'm fully aware of that.
Mr. Borelli, Matt?
Thank you, Mary. And I would say either in conjunction with that or separate again, if we could think about or the Park and Rec, or think about that working group that I mentioned, because I think if we are able to get funds for that and look at different areas around town for that action park, what it would cost, what the barriers would be to obtaining, you know, working on those parcels, who has jurisdiction. I just wouldn't want to see that fall by the wayside while we try to come up with space for other things. I think they're both necessary, and I really want to push and advocate for that group to get that action park going. And I know we had our goals. group to get that action park going. And I know we had our goals meeting and members of our board, without our staff, we're interested in serving on that if the parking rec were interested in going in that direction. So.
Okay, it does sound like there's an, like there's an interest in getting together. Stacy, I'm gonna turn to you next, but you are the driver on when you want that to happen. So.
That's a lot of power.
There you go.
I actually just want to jump off of what Mr. Burley said. I think having a focus group is a good idea, but I'm not sure that we need to limit it to the action park. I think there's a lot of projects that we need to find spaces for. And so having one group with a relatively reasonable amount of people on the focus group to talk about different spaces and what could go where might be more helpful than, you know, a focus group for the action park and a focus group for pickleball and a focus group for this and this as, you know, instead of having all of those have one focus group about, really, because it all comes down to space. That's what we're, that's what we need to figure out. Space and what we can fit there.
Well, and it may help everybody to understand that we are all going to have to cooperate together to get what everybody wants. So.
Yep.
We, it takes, it takes a village here. Marcus?
Yeah, thank you so much. And thank you, everyone, for being here. Welcome, Fred. Happy to see you on the commission. And then I would just say what Stacy said, as far as having that group decision, that collaborative effort, that also help us prioritize. I think to have all those different voices in the room and really come into a conclusion of what can happen when, other than space, you know, what do we need to pursue sooner than later out of all of those things? And maybe, so then that way, no one's caught off guard with how we're doing this, why we're doing this, if all these people are in the room and they can go back to their specific, you know, groups or pockets of the town and people that have felt a certain way about it, like I was in the room where it happened. So this is why we're doing it this way. And I think that transparency and that communication, I think, will be really beneficial as well.
Matt?
Yeah, I agree that if we had that type of focus group, instead of joint board meetings, we're talking about space and then wait another six months and let's talk more about space. If we could get a working group, I'm fine opening it up because there are so many needs. But, you know, members of the community, members of the groups that would like to see, you know, have this happen. And then, of course, commissioners and a member of our board. I'm absolutely fine with that. I just didn't want to get into the whole, you know, let's have another joint meeting in four months. Let's have another joint and, you know, ten voices in the room and see you next meeting. So I think that would be great if we have a focused, focus group on these issues. So, thank you.
Okay. And as I keep saying, last time I checked, there are no magic rocks in Needham that we haven't turned over yet. So so we have, you know, a relatively finite set of properties that we already own. Certainly, somebody can blue the sky about something that we don't own, but that has a different set of issues. Any other observations tonight that we think are important while we're together?
The only other thing I would say, and just to kind of end it on this way, is they always ask, what's the one thing that you need? And the first thing everyone always says is money, funds to do projects. Unless you don't have the funds, you can't do the project. But the next thing I would say is just support. I mean, having meetings like this and just talking about and knowing the select board, the finance committee, everyone that's kind of involved in it, what will come to the, you know, final plan. It's just the support that we get from town management and other boards. That's probably the next biggest thing that we need.
Well, so what I can say is that we have all the things we've talked about tonight captured in our goals. And they are, you know, in there or in, or carrying forward, depending on which state they're in. So we are ready to support what you tell us you need. That's my understanding of our board.
It's a big list.
Okay, it's a big list. I think it's a big list from our citizens, so we will see what we can start to knock off.
Fantastic.
Great. I want to thank all of you for coming tonight. I want to thank Stacy and her team for all their hard work for the summer. I know it has been truly a long, hot summer. And it's not over, it's not over yet, although hopefully we've got slightly cooler days ahead for the next couple of weeks to finish it off.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And we'll look forward to seeing you again. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful. The next item on our agenda is the Director of Public Works. We're looking forward to welcoming Karis back with some updates for DPW. We're going to see if Karis is looking well rested. Perfect, Karis.
Hi.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Maybe a little bit better rested than the last time. I think we were on a public meeting. It's, it's great to be back.
Good. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kate or to you, who's, who wants to talk first, but we're gonna get a sense of where DPW is this summer with some projects.
It's all Karis, and I believe we want to bring Ryan over too. Sorry, Karis.
Yes.
Then we will look forward for Ryan joining us.
So I thought, well, we wait for Ryan. I thought now would be a really good time to provide an update. Usually I like to provide one at the beginning of the construction season to prepare the board for all the projects that we have going on. I know that some of the staff ended up meeting with the board on some of the bigger projects, the more visible projects, the ones that you're likely to get phone calls about to provide updates on those projects, but I wanted to kind of give a broader overview of what we're doing. And I also wanted to just thank my Public Works team who really stepped up while I was away. I know Ed Olson took on the role of acting assistant director when Bob Lewis moved on to Framingham. But I also have Cecilia Simczak, who works in finance and admin, who not only took on some additional communication tasks dealing with the keeping the town manager's office informed of everything that was happening in Public Works, but also took on the climate action plan at the same time. And then we also, I think, just before I went out, had promoted Tom Ryder, who is a longtime town employee to the position of town engineer. And so he really took that role on as well without a lot of guidance. So I just wanted to thank them and everybody else in the Public Works senior staff and down who really took the initiative during my absence to make sure that all the projects continued moving forward while I was away. I did want to give you a little update, though, of some of the challenges that we're facing in Public Works and none of which that are insurmountable, but certainly ones that are having an impact on our workload or our ability to complete projects. One is we have quite a few internal staffing transitions. Right now, we have about seventeen vacancies in Public Works at various levels of the organization. And we're looking at obviously trying to fill those as quickly as possible, particularly as we get into the winter season to make sure that we're at our full strength before we get into any sort of inclement weather. We also are experiencing supply chain disruptions. It's primarily in our maintenance fields, so in our building maintenance division and in our fleet. But we're also feeling it in other realms as well. We've had issues getting things like granite curbing that there was a supply chain problem with, and we were able to negotiate the project at Harris Ave. Actually, the reason they're starting by the school isn't just because it's good to get the school portion over with before school starts, but also it gives us time to get to the intersection of Dedham, Warren and Harris, which does require a lot of radius curve. So we're anticipating that by the time we get to that end of Harris Avenue, we'll have that curb delivered. I think it's coming from Georgia or some southern state. It has to be trucked up. So we are dealing with some supply chain disruptions as well as things like piping, steel. So some of our larger capital projects are taking a little bit longer than they normally would because we're waiting for those materials. There's a lot of work that's happening right now in the public sector for infrastructure improvements. So we're, there's a lot of competition for the, particularly the good contractors in, in the area that we want to do work on our roads and in our water supply. So we are making sure that we're putting out bids that are fair and we're working to make sure that we're getting vendors to come in and put in, put in proposals. And then I also wanted to add, which I'm sure the board is aware, we have continued to try to work with Eversource to try to coordinate our work between the town and the utility. Unfortunately, there were a few projects that did pop up this summer that we hadn't anticipated. And sort of along those lines, we're also trying to work on our communication with sort of general communication and then communication with neighbors. People are very interested in the work that we do and they're looking to be involved and communicated with. And we're trying to strike a balance. It's hard because our work often does pivot very quickly. For example, the roadwork that we are planning on doing, many of the roads that we were planning on approaching ended up being on Eversource's list for repair. So we didn't want to, you know, we don't want to tell residents that we're going to do their road and then whenever Source comes in, say, oh, nope, it's going to be five years till your road gets done. So we're trying to strike that between giving people far enough notice to be able to be prepared and have weigh-in, but not so much notice that we have to change directions. So we're working on those items as well. So we're currently heavy into our general operations for the summer, although the weather has been challenging, having very high temperatures has causes to focus really early in the day on our work to make sure that we can provide our staff appropriate water and shelter when we get into the hottest parts of the afternoon. So we've been in our operations work, but I'm just going to give you a quick update on the construction projects that you might see. We have several road and sidewalk projects. I mentioned the Harris-Denham-Warren reconfiguration, which will make substantial improvements of the pedestrian and vehicle traffic that gets processed through that intersection. We have a major project that we're doing on Central Ave between Cedar and Booth Street, where we are actually changing the layout of the road fairly significantly and widening the sidewalks, narrowing the road, which will have the net effect of hopefully making traffic safer by providing narrower, narrower lanes. So people are paying more attention when they're driving, but also provides a safety berm between the traffic and the sidewalks. So that way, when people are in the sidewalks, they're not right up against a granite curb. And that also has a positive impact to our stormwater. So now we're collecting more of our stormwater and allowing it to go into the ground as opposed to go into our storm drain system. So it was a project that had a lot of benefits and that work, they finished most of the curbing work for that project and they'll be going back and doing milling and paving later. We also have several roads where we're doing different types of topical treatments that will help extend the life cycling of our road. And actually have Ryan with me in case there's any follow-up questions. But we're doing two different types of treatments and these are kind of extending treatments. So we would pave a road and then we would do a topical application that essentially extends the life of that road sometimes to the same duration of what a paving would do. And it's a much cheaper application process. We had a pavement condition index done of the town. Attempted to do it every two years. The last one was four years ago and we're doing one right now. And in that study, it made recommendations based on the condition index of different roads, the correct approach to make sure that we extend the life cycle of those roads. So we use a whole combination of approaches to make sure that our roads are well-maintained. And we believe that each one of these correct applications in the correct location will ensure that we have a roadway network that is, we think is really a really high-quality roadway network for our neighboring area. And those two treatments that we're using, one is a rubber chip treatment, which is probably the most high-end of all the different chip products that you can use. We have found that it's been very successful. It's been very quick to go from construction to utilization. It's about twenty-four hours between application to when it's safe to utilize. We find that has a lot less spray of the chip than any of the other products that we've used. It does utilize recycled materials as part of the rubber application. And we found that the longevity of it is much longer than other chip products we have used. I think most notably, the largest area that we've used this product on is South Street. We had used this application on that road several years ago to extend the life of the road before the Eversource project was completed. We do this particular application for the most part in residential communities. The reason is rubber flexes and the roads in residential areas are not as stable as they are on main roads that need to support things like truck traffic. So we need a product that's going to move more. We also use a micro-surfacing treatment, which we would use more in a arterial road or a commercial road because it's more of a cement product and it doesn't flex the same way as the rubber chip does. So that's sort of the rhyme and reason behind the programs that we have. And we've been fairly aggressive at making sure that our roads are treated. We also, for the vendor's sake, we do try to lump up neighboring roads. It's a much better mobility. They can mobilize, do several small roads and then leave a neighborhood. It would be much more difficult to work with our vendors if we did chop it up and only attack one road at a time throughout the entire town. So we are looking at improving the whole network. To figure, I'd open it up now for follow-up questions if there are any on our road pavement work.
Any questions from the board on roads and pavement that you're seeing this summer? Kevin?
Yeah, Karis, thank you so much. Believe it or not, you anticipated all my questions. I was really curious about the Harris, the Central and the Eversource. And my other question is about heat. What do you guys do about heat for the crews that are out there? You say you have them out earlier and what else?
So we generally, we try to modify our plans as much as possible. We'll generally have staff out there to oversee contractors. We do have contractors that work through these events. But those are staff that do have the ability to get out of the sun, to get water. We make sure to provide them. We have a water, a water filter system in a couple of our buildings as well as ice machines to make sure that they're able to stay hydrated and cool. For the most part, the majority of our staff has really moved into a sheltered location. So we have projects that we do in the summer, like repainting and reconstructing picnic benches, refurbishing outdoor furniture, even just prepping materials for the next day that we can pivot to if we need to during weather events. The other thing I'll say is we've started our staff a little bit earlier in the morning. Part of our adaptation of summer hours has us starting at six o'clock in the morning, which enables us time to muster and mobilize. So as soon as seven o'clock hits, we're on-site and able to do work. And that helps as well, having our staff do the majority of their work before noon, obviously, gets them out of the hottest part of the day. We've had, I would say, five or six days in this stretch where we have made, call it like extraordinary accommodation and brought all of our staff into a location where as long as they're not dealing with a contracted issue, they're able to seek shelter. So it's really about making sure that our staff is taking adequate breaks. They're staying adequately hydrated and that they're out of the sun on a regular basis. So those are the things that we've been trying to prioritize for the heat.
Yeah, that's good because, I mean, it's brutal. I hate to think they're out there. Okay, just very quickly, rubber chip treatment. Is that a gravel treatment as well? I mean, is it like a base with gravel on top? I just.
So I think Ryan can certainly explain a little bit better the application process, but it has a chip product that goes in, so like a stone, and then it's a rubber application on top. So Ryan, do you want to explain how that goes down on the road?
Sure. So the, the companies and the Mast dot has a lot of video. Also, if you Google rubber chip, that will pop up to check the application. There are like two-minute clips show. So what occurs is the highway staff prepares the road, any failures? So there's, because it's not a structural component, we have to do a little bit of maintenance to get it to the standard that we want. Right after that, they, when the company comes, they have an application that squirts one lane at a time, half the roadway with a, with the twenty percent rubber. It goes down very hot. Followed by a specialized machine that spreads these chips. And behind that is called a pneumatic tired compaction device. It's actually rubber wheels, not the steel drum, and it pushes the stones flat. And within about an hour, depending on how hot it is, about an hour, sweeper comes sweep up the, most of the excess stones, and that's how fast it is. Very fast process. It's totally seals the pavement and the gravel is a manufactured fractured stone that's treated, and that is the wearing course. So it's a rubber treatment that completely, it's not like a driveway seal at all. Goes down very thick. It completely seals and stops the deterioration of the existing asphalt pavement. And then the chips provide the wearing course. Very fast process.
Ryan, we have a relatively large audience tonight, so I know that they are learning a lot about DPW and road surfaces.
Terrific.
Any other questions, Kevin?
Yeah, no, that is great. Thank you very much. Just, yeah, the rubber chip is great. I'm happy it works. It's a pain to walk on the street in bare feet with it, but, but, yeah, pack it down well.
Yeah, it's a great thing.
And we have talked internally about institutionally, institutionally, sorry, having more sweeping that we do subsequent to the implementation of the, you know, the initial sweep that Ryan had indicated. So coming back after a week or coming back, you know, coming back after a week or coming back, you know, seasonally, usually what happens, that surface becomes smoother and smoother. And part of that's from our snow removal process. So going through those streets where we've recently applied this product after the winter and doing an additional sweeping to try to catch any of the debris that might have come out during our plowing season.
Thank you.
Karras, I know that we had a meeting this week. Am I losing track of weeks? Last week with EverSource. And once again, EverSource appears to have caught us by surprise with a couple of major road projects that they have on their calendar that we had no idea were coming. Do you think that we will be successful in being able to say to them, you know, if it's longer than a tenth of a mile, you really need to talk to us first? I mean, it feels like there should be some ground rules that would lead to their engaging with the town before projects been designed from their perspective.
Yeah, I'm trying to work with council a little bit to get some more clarity as to what jurisdiction we actually have for regulating the utility. My understanding is they do have pretty broad authority and as far as getting access to their infrastructure underneath the road. So we're trying to figure out what leverage we have. I know historically, the Public Works Department has tried to find a lot of different ways, either by, you know, providing additional charges or additional inspectional services. And a lot of these practices were ended up, we ended up not getting supported by the Department of Public Utilities on. So we're trying to figure out how to make sure that we can hold EverSource accountable for communicating with us about the work they intend on doing. I can think of two projects this summer that came up that were not on our radar. And we did a fairly aggressive call with both EverSource Gas and EverSource Electric to try to get all of the players at the table within their utilities and find out what their plans were for this summer. So some projects like the gas main in front of on Webster Street in front of the high school, we were aware of that project, although we had requested that they do the work or the bulk of the work while school is out of session. And unfortunately, that did not occur. And then there are other projects that we were not notified of and we had to pivot some of the roads based on that work as well. So I'm trying to get some better clarity and understand what authority we actually have. And then we'll have to figure out what mechanisms we have for enforcement based on what authority we have.
Okay. All right. And just for the public, these projects that we're talking about will come before the public because a grant of location is part of the process for the two new projects that we saw, but there's some work to do before we can get there.
And I would also indicate a lot of the problems we're having are on the gas side as well. And there is no grant of location process. We do require a street permit process, which is how we find out about these projects. But again, we would like to be able to discuss these projects six months in advance while we're putting our plans together and not discuss them in the middle of summer.
No. Okay. Any other questions, comments for Karras? Karras, do you have more for us? Have you started recruiting for snowplow drivers?
Uh, we're starting. Yeah, we're starting our conversations on our whole snow plowing program. Right now, Ryan's actually working with neighboring communities to find out what they're paying and making sure that our rates are in line with other neighboring communities. We had a little bit of difficulty last year where some communities ended up paying better than what they had initially disclosed. And we did lose a few vendors in that process. So we want to make sure that we don't get caught unaware this year and we offer a competitive rate to our contractors. So we are having those conversations as well as everything related to snow, not just how to recruit people. And we're even talking about our own equipment and how to retain pieces of equipment to make sure that if we can't find drivers that our staff can be in heavier pieces to make sure that we're taking care of the roads.
Okay. So year round plan to make it all run.
I did have a couple of bigger projects that I think you may be aware of that I just wanted to touch on. We have the Town Common Project, which is broken ground. Which you've seen outside. We have a 16 inch water main project, which is the completion of a project that's been going on for probably about a decade. It's now making its way down Mark Tree and on Central, we've started our prepositioning of equipment. And that is a large project that will probably take the rest of its construction season, if not part of the spring as well, in order to upgrade that particular water system.
So when people come back in the fall, they should expect to see construction on Central related to this project?
Yes. Yes, this will be going on. And this is one of the items where we do have some supply chain issues. So we are making sure that we they're sort of laying pipe as they get pipe. So that may cause delays in the project as well.
Okay.
We have started or put out to bed work on the first phase of the Walker Gordon Pond cleanup. So that's the construction for the inputs into Walker Gordon. And we'll be going out for design services for the second phase of that project, since the project's now being funded from ARPA. We are rebuilding Lake Street pump, the Lake Street Sewer Pump Station. That's part of a programmed replacement. We have several areas of town where we're targeting for water service replacement, which is part of the town's lead abatement program. We've removed almost all of the full lead services in town, but we have several areas where we have lead goos next. Again, we're trying to consolidate different neighborhoods. It's much easier for a water company to come in and do several services in the same neighborhood as opposed to doing services all over town. That's part of a multi-year program. And then we've also restarted our brooks and culverts maintenance program, which is really coming in and doing a large cleanup of the brooks that we have largely of vegetation, but as well as some sediment and and debris to make sure that they're free flowing as part of our efforts to deal with some of these larger storms that we have had. And those are really the main construction projects that we have. And I would be glad to answer any questions that people have over design projects that are in designer items that were funded for study.
That's a lot. Kevin?
Yeah, hi. They're just bouncing in my ear when you said lead pipes. Just explain, are those off the water main going into houses or?
So we have had a lead removal program in this town for quite a long period of time. I will say we treat our water system for lead. So we treat it to make sure that the lead basically doesn't come off into the water that goes into people's homes. And we do testing for people who have lead pipes in their house. So if you have a lead service or a lead goos next, we do do testing to make sure that our water treatment is working and that lead isn't making its way into people's drinking water. What we're looking at right now is the services. So there's, I think it's maybe two dozen people in town who have a full lead service, which is basically the whole pipe from the main to the house that is made of lead. What most people have that we're doing this program for is the connection between the service and the main is made out of lead. And that's what we're replacing in most of these cases. So even when we get all of the lead out of our system, we're still going to be treating our water for the potential that people have led in their homes because they do have led in their homes. If they haven't remodeled or they haven't upgraded their plumbing. So even when we get all the lead out of our system, we're still going to maintain this treatment to make sure that the water is safe for people to drink in town.
Thank you very much. It's great.
Okay. Any other questions? I think your update was intended to be a brief one. It's been a little bit longer than brief and you have talked for the vast majority of that time. So that speaks to the volume of projects that is ongoing. And more to come, obviously. It sounds like the construction season will continue through the winter. And and I know we try to be careful about street openings then, but there are some projects that will continue to try to wrap up and then we have these EverSource projects that have appeared as well. So thank you. I'm sure we'll be seeing you again, Karras. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Terrific. Our next item this evening is water and sewer rates. Mr. Davison is here. We did have a presentation on these rates at our last meeting. Dave?
Yes, Madam Chair. As you noted, the board at its last meeting held in July held a public hearing on the water and sewer rates, which the board heard a report from the Water Sewer Rate Structure Committee. It was a recommendation to the board in terms of adjusting the rates. It would be if the board were to so adopt, this will be the first change to the rate since June of 2019. Effectively, the rate changes include a 2% increase to the step rates for domestic water or the water that's primarily used inside the household. For those who have a second meter usually associated with the irrigation, the step rate increases are 5% per step. And the sewer rate, there is an increase of 5% per step there as well. And finally, there's a $1 adjustment in terms of the basic monthly fee for the basic service with sewer. Again, as reminded to the board, these were driven both by the cost of services, including the MWRA assessment as well as recognizing that there was a payment that Coca-Cola used to provide for its use of the town service, which is no longer being used when they disconnected, continued their bottling operations. And they paid more than 99% of their total usage at the top rate, which effectively provided a subsidy to most all the other users. And with the loss of those dollars and no equal reduction in cost that the board recognized that there was going to have to be an adjustment to those rates. They were postponed because of COVID. And here we are today in 2022. The proposal would not take effect until October 1st. That's the recommendation. So effectively, folks who are still watering in this hot time, they would not be seeing a increase in the rate for watering from that which they've been watering. But basically, as things start cooling down, as they do in October, that's when the rate adjustment would take effect. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions the board has.
Right. Thank you, Dave. And just, I know that everybody on the board understands this, but perhaps for the public as well, part of the challenge with water rates is that as people conserve, if they should actually be successful at that, and as water usage goes down, which ours did because of the Coca-Cola decision to no longer, you know, be bottling in Needham, right? That means that there's sort of a fixed amount of infrastructure cost that continues. So that cost increases to everybody else proportionally. And we are all paying for that because water infrastructure is something that we all require and benefit from. So we, I can't remember, Kate, did we get any public input on this? It feels, I'm worried that it's been swamped by two other issues, but no, no. Okay. So we did have a discussion. No public input did come on this particular matter that we haven't already heard. Does the board wish to have a discussion or is somebody prepared to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm sure the board approved the proposed water and sewer rates identified on the schedule shown on our agenda fact sheet did August 9th, 2022, that they be effective October 1st, 2022. In further, the board approved a subject disposal fee of $85 per 1,000 gallons.
And a second?
A second, ma'am.
Okay. Um, we do need to have a roll call. Any further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Hi.
Mr. Keen?
Hi.
Ms. Frail?
Hi.
Mr. Borelli?
Hi.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Mr. Davison. I'm just curious, can, can somebody please move the consent agenda?
Yeah, I was just so moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Nelson?
Hi.
Mr. Keen?
Hi.
Ms. Frail?
Hi.
Mr. Borelli?
Hi.
And the chair votes yes. So thank you, Dave. Thanks to the committee for all their work. And we will carry forward with our water and sewer rates. The next item that we have this evening is a discussion of legal counsel. And I'm going to turn it over first to our town manager, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to note the fact sheet and the agenda indicated that our labor council would be here, but he was called away on a work emergency. So I've invited him to your September meeting. I just wanted to give a little bit of background. In April of 2020, really in the, you know, the worst part of the early days of the pandemic, our town council got sick and was incapacitated. And we were able to turn to the firm of MRS Harrington that we had been working with for many years on special projects as a trusted partner. And since that time, the board had voted after that to create adject town council. And since that time, we've, MRS Harrington, the firm is town council. You recall that when Dave Tobin was here, he was a wonderful counselor, I will say, and I miss him very much. He was a one person counsel and we often had special counsel that we had to outsource for specific areas. And having now worked with MRS Harrington for the last two years, it has, having a firm as town council has been really very helpful for us because on, and I know Chris will get into this, but on staff, they have a team of lawyers who have different practice areas that we have been able to to use without having to go outside the firm. I, we took a look at the topic areas that town council has helped us with over the last two years since April of 2020. And there were 100 different topic areas. I just wanted to highlight a couple. A lot of the zoning, a lot of zoning. We've done a lot of permitting that the town has been permitting. We had to permit police and fire and the Hillside School three times, the school itself three times. We had to permit a communications system that we worked with town councils to secure for free on state land, which was amazing. The Cogswell Building, Emory Grover, the common. So there's been a lot of work just on the permitting. The pandemic itself, we brought MRS Harrington on board. As I said, in mid-April and we then postponed town meeting and held it outside and had to, we had to postpone our election. So there was constant help on that, on that front, because it was a very, if you recall, it was constantly evolving as to what we could do and when we could have it. We've used different attorneys for our compliance with the Land and Water Conservation Fund with looking at property to acquire. Different attorneys worked with us on two of our very successful tax improvement financing plans that we did with TripAdvisor and NBC. Remote participation, outdoor dining, alcohol licensing and violations, as you've seen very recently, also dog hearings, as you've seen, training for board and committee members. You know, so many contracts, licenses and leases, these, we're probably doing five, six, eight contracts a week, town council under our bylaw, signs all, reviews and signs all contracts over a certain threshold. EverSource, the chair was mentioning, we spent a lot of time represented by MRS Harrington with the prior ever source major project, and we may have some more coming up. Water Management Act, and again, as a counselor for us in the civil rights lawsuit. I just wanted to say, to conclude, Madam Chair, that you know, when I think about quality in the law firms that we hire, we're looking at, looking at things like results, the areas that the firm has excellence and experience in, their understanding of our business so that, you know, we have we're a municipality, we want to make sure the focus of the firm is on that. What their client retention is, what their attorney retention is, whether they have succession plans and how they collaborate with clients. I can tell you that I'm personally seeking client representation with somebody of the highest ethical standards, achieves the outcomes that we want and the results that we want, frankly, for good value. And then is a trusted partner for us. And so I will recommend, Madam Chair, that the board make final approval of MRS Harrington as our town council at your next meeting. But it was our opportunity to hear directly from our primary attorney at the firm about the firm and give you a little bit more background on how they're composed and what their philosophy is. Thank you. Turn of view, Chris.
Thank you, Kate. Chris, over to you.
Thank you very much, Kate. And thanks, thanks very much to all the board members for the opportunity to come out and have this discussion tonight. And for putting this on your agenda. I appreciate the opportunity to speak a little bit more about myself, our firm, and what we do and how we do it. And for putting this on your agenda. I appreciate the opportunity to speak a little bit more about myself, our firm, and what we do and how we do it. Our firm's located in Wellesley, across the street from the library and more or less across the street from, across Main Street from Town Hall. We were founded in nineteen eighty-eight and have been specializing in municipal law ever since then. I myself joined the firm in two thousand five and have been here continuously ever since, focusing entirely on municipal law. Our firm currently has thirteen attorneys here in total. And all of our attorneys spend all of their, substantially all of their professional time serving our municipal clients. Municipal law is what we do, and it's what we love. Our firm currently serves as town council in a handful of towns, and those are Wellesley, Reading, Hopkinton, Norfolk, Carlisle, Littleton, Stockbridge, Lancaster, Bourne, and Templeton. So a wide variety of differently sized towns and sort of spread out all over, all over the Commonwealth. From this area here to all the way out west in the Berkshires. In addition to our town council work, where we are full town council in those towns that I just listed, we will, at any given time, be serving a special council in, in other towns on a project-by-project basis. Oftentimes in land use matters, zoning matters, or environmental matters. At any given time, our firm may be serving a hand, small handful of private clients. But that no point does that really amount to a substantial percentage of our firm's work. And at no point does that distract from our core mission of serving Massachusetts towns. Structurally, in terms of the organization of our firm, we historically have had, recently had five partners in the firm. One of which was the founding partner, Ray Meares, who is for some time now been winding down and will be retiring in October. We've been working on that transition for some time, and that, his departure, although it'll be a loss for us, should not be felt greatly in town. We've been, we've been working intently to make sure that's not something that's going to impact any of our actual clients. So as of this fall, our firm's leadership will be comprised of four remaining partners, which includes myself, Tom Harrington, who I believe the board should be acquainted with from some recent appearances, Donna Brewer, and Jenny Merrill are the four current partners. We are pleased to know that as of this fall, our firm will be fifty percent women-owned. And actually, we anticipate that that number will increase as of the first of the year, at which point it will become a majority women-owned business enterprise. Just a quick discussion of sort of our philosophy in terms of providing legal services to, to Needham and to the other towns that we serve. We strive to do, I think, in terms of general philosophy, we strive to do two, two things. One is to always provide a designated lead attorney to the town that's going to be always readily available to, to town leadership, always recognizable as the point person who's responsible for providing the services. And he was directly responsible for fielding the questions, monitoring the progress of the work, and ultimately providing the advice to the town. So designated point person who's always available and responsible. In addition to that, we also pride ourselves on having, in addition to that designated lead, we pride ourselves on having a deep bench of municipal lawyers in the, in the firm to provide a broad range of expertise across the full gamut of, of, of issues that might arise in the municipal field. If there's one thing that I continue to be struck by, being a municipal attorney, even after years and years of doing it, is that municipal law is actually a number of different practice areas sort of all rolled into one. There is, there is general government, finance, land use, litigation, often public procurement, environmental, energy law, employment law, public construction. That's just sort of a small subset of sort of all of the, the range of, of things that we need to be able to deal with as a municipal law firm. So as a result, a firm serving as town council really needs to provide a wide, a wide array of expertise to its towns. To that point, I think we've got an incredible team here at the firm. Some of whom you all may, may know, and some of whom I think you are, you may not, but are likely to get to know, hopefully going forward. We've got Ivorya Freed, who handles all of our licensing work, public records questions, open meeting law questions. We've got Jenny Merrill, Chris Brown, who focus primarily on construction law and public procurement. We've got Alex Rubin, who specializes in human resources and employment. Marissa Miller and Ethan Dively specialize in zoning and land use law. And we've got Donna Brewer, one of my partners, is the seasoned litigator who can handle any, any litigation that, that, that may need to be handled. So for any question that needs to be addressed, we, we do have people working here who are capable of handling all of it. But we always want to, as, as I said at the outset, we always want to maintain that direct line of communication between me, the lead, and the town. Because what we always want to protect against is a scenario where people in town, whether it be Kate or a board chair or a department head, is fielding legal advice from someone that may not be perfectly familiar with, or an attorney they may not, they might, they may not know. So while advice that, that, that we're giving may be informed by sort of a group approach and the work of others in the firm, we do want to maintain that, that, that designated lead is the person who's going to be accountable, answer any questions, and give you the client confidence that the advice you're getting is coming from someone you can rely upon. The other thing I'd say about our general sort of philosophy and approach is that our firm, I think, has an unusually collaborative way of practicing law. Everyone who works here has an open door policy at all times. And I often joke about turning to the me, Harrison Harrington hallway if I need a question answered, whether it be a simple question that I should probably know the answer to, but may not in the, in the, in the immediate, in the moment. Or a complicated question that sort of requires some thought and collaboration. It's always possible here to sort of, you know, generate a, a group of attorneys huddling in the hallway, sort of kick a problem around and attempt to come up with the best answer on a moment's notice. In addition to that, in the days before COVID, the entire firm would typically eat lunch together every day, which is something that we, we, we always loved, and I think is something unusual and that, and that does set us apart. That sort of daily lunch room discussion was always an opportunity to talk about anything ranging from what TV shows people were watching that week to difficult legal questions. And it was sort of gave us a sort of free daily opportunity to, you know, kick, kick problems around and arrive at a, at a, at the best answer we could with the benefit of the thinking of, you know, cyber six attorneys at any given time. That practice of daily lunches here sort of took a hit during COVID, but we're slowly getting back into it as time goes on. I counted, actually counted eight, eight of us in the lunchroom this afternoon for lunch. And so the key point here is that on any tricky question that we're working on in-house, the advice that we ultimately deliver is going to be the product of the firm's collective thinking and expertise and experience. That may not always be immediately obvious to the client as we're delivering the advice, but I just wanted to share that insight into our process. We do that because we think it helps us give the best advice we can, because it makes practicing law more fun. And also, we think it adds value to, to the client in the sense that you're getting that collective expertise and experience in a way that's never going to, you, the client is never going to actually be charged for, and is never going to appear on, you know, any, any invoice that we send to the town. That's just, that's just the way we, we like to practice. And I guess finally, a general note, we always emphasize responsiveness and attentiveness to the client's needs. I'm always available by cellphone, always available by email, and in the rare instances where I'm not, we have experienced colleagues here in the firm who can, who can step in and take over as need be without any interruption in our ability to provide legal services. I was just away for two weeks at the end of July, and my partner, Tom Harrington, I know fielded a couple of questions from Kate. And my colleague Alex Rubin stepped into it to attend a Board of Health hearing on a restaurant that I couldn't attend, and I'd like to think that that coverage, you know, worked fairly well. So although we always want to have that lead, you know, in charge, we do have people who, who are looking out for each other here and can step in to take over as need be. And finally, you know, we're ten minutes away from, from Town Hall, and I always appreciate the ability to be, to be able to zip over if needed, to sign a contract or step into a meeting if need be. I think in, in terms of working with Needham, it's, it's, it's great to be so close. That's not always needed, but if it ever is, it's, it's, it's a nice, it's a nice thing for us to be able to be up there at a moment's notice. So overall, I would just want to say it's been my very great pleasure over the past two-plus years to be working with the town. I appreciate everybody I've worked with in town government and in the town's professional staff. Everybody is, I think, extraordinary, and it's been, it's Needham has been a great source of interesting work and interesting questions to answer. And I very much valued my time working with the town and hope we can continue that relationship for, for some time going forward.
Ah, yes, the Chinese curse. May you be blessed with interesting work. I, I, I would also note on Attorney Heap's vacation, he, he didn't mention, but I'm pretty sure I must have talked to you pretty much every day that week. So I am, I am grateful at a time when you're vacationing that you were in fact still available, even though I hate to say that because you need a vacation too. So, um. I hope that gives the board an overview, and I would like to open it up for questions. As, as somebody who's been on the board through a period of time, and Mr. Borelli might comment as well, when we had a sole practitioner in the role of our legal counsel versus having a firm in the role of our legal counsel, having the firm of me, Harrison Harrington, as our legal counsel has clearly been decidedly beneficial from my perspective. So many times we would be involved in an issue and we were scrambling and trying to figure out who we were going to reach out to because it was clear we needed more specialized expertise than our sole practitioner was able to bring on a particular matter. Even though he had a broad base of experience and history and lots of, lots of time working on all those issues for the town, that the issues just became increasingly more complicated, more regulatory, more scientifically based, all, all kinds of different factors came into play that led to a need for us, I think, to collectively feel like we needed some different representation. Mr. Borelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the presentation, Attorney Heap. Yeah, it was wonderful working with Dave, and I forget, was it forty years of knowledge that he had worked for the town? And a, a real mentor to the board and to the, to the town in so many ways. And I think what's great about a solo practitioner is he was, you know, available, usually you are, you know, you're available and you can give that kind of, you know, face-to-face, you're knowledgeable, you're approachable. And I think what your firm brings to the town is that solo feel with you and the lead, Chris, or whether it was Ray during the TIF project, to know that it's almost like a solo firm, but has so much of a knowledge base behind you that it gives that extra layer of confidence. And I met Ray during the TIF, which was terrific for TripAdvisor. And again, again, for NBC Universal, what your firm did. And to hear what Kate said, so many knowledge areas that you have to know and so many things that you're involved in and need them, even tonight with the guidance on the dog hearing, pretty much had to pivot very quickly to give that advice. And it's nice, I didn't know about your firm kind of talking behind the scenes and, you know, and having these lunches. I think that's even one step more of making sure you get the right answer, being collaborative, and then just being responsive to the client. I love that you're in Wellesley in one hand, and I don't love you're in Wellesley, but at least, at least you're close. You are right down the street. We, so much of what we do now requires a competent town council. And I just want to thank your firm as we move forward for, for what they've done and, and kind of been there in those steps. You know, it was a tough time with that transition, not knowing which way we're going to go, and really stepped up and gave us the confidence to, to move forward. So a well-regarded firm, highly regarded among, in the Commonwealth, so very supportive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from people? Okay. All right. I don't think I have any other, oh, there we go. Heidi?
Hi, sorry for the late hand raise. Thank you for the presentation, Attorney Heap. I've been with the group for a very short time, so it was really nice to hear a little bit more of the background of your firm and your work with the town. And I guess I'm, I'm, this is really more of a question for, for Kate and for the board. As I haven't been here for very long. I guess I'm curious, it sounds like Attorney Heap and his firm have been working with the town for a long time. And that he stepped in to fill a void when Attorney Tobin left. And I'm curious if we ever entertained any other firms as well, which is not to say that there's anything that we don't like about your firm, but I'm just curious how the selection was made and sort of if we have ever. I think it's unusual to make a decision, a formal decision, without considering sort of all of the options that may be on the table. While I'm not suggesting we start interviewing, I'm just curious what the process has been and sort of how we arrived here.
Kate, do you want to speak to that, or do you, would you like me to speak? Where, where do you want to start?
Well, I, I could start, maybe you could add to it. You know, we have probably five or six municipal law firms or firms that do some municipal work. Some or all that we have used for special counsel on other projects. We have at one, at, you know, at some points, we've had probably six. We, when we went to make the adjunct appointment, we went through a thought process about what firms were available, what firms we had been already working with, what firms were around, what, you know, talked to colleagues of mine about some of the bigger firms. There are a number of, I would say significantly bigger firms that, that specialize in municipal law. And so talked to colleagues about, you know, responsiveness and the likelihood of getting the, the named attorney all the time and those kinds of things. So we did consider this in, in two thousand twenty. And there really wasn't, I think that for the board at the time, there really wasn't any question that what, what the town needs is the most competent law firm, frankly, at the best price with who are trusted partners and who are known when you're, you know, just moving into having representation. And for us at the time, that was Harrison Harrington and their sort of medium, small to medium-sized firm. The board took this up again last year and felt that there wasn't any need to make a change, but wanted to take another year to think about whether there would be some reason to make a change. And, you know, given our long relationship with the firm, we did not feel that it made any sense, or at least I'm not recommending that it makes sense to, to go out. Because I know from the, my network of colleagues, the kinds of downsides there are to the bigger law firms. And so, and we've been, I've been very satisfied with the, the results that the town is receiving from Harrison Harrington. So Marion, did you want to add on to that?
So I guess I would have noted a couple of things. I do, I do think Kate's correct. We do have a variety and have had some other legal firms that we did work with that I know Kate and staff evaluated at the time, and we talked about pros and cons of different things. They had worked with us in particular aspects. So again, it would be a question of how do we understand how that firm fits within the whole portfolio of work that the town needs doing. I think to the point that Matt made about the notion of getting a sole practitioner feel with the bench that is appropriate for municipal law has been really a plus as I, we've become more familiar with a broader range of legal counsel from me, Harrison Harrington over the last two years. At the time that the decision was made, it was really right as the pandemic was starting, so it was a really wild and crazy time. Definitely, there's been a sense of we needed to get through that period. But the other observation I would make is we are actually now in midstream in some litigation, which would be another thing that just as I think about all of the factors that I might weigh as a reason also for
All of the factors that I might weigh as a reason um, also for maintaining where we are. In addition to all the other positive factors that we've already talked about, I just um. You know, somebody who understands and has been with us on that case from the very beginning. So. Any other questions? Otherwise, we will um, certainly come back to this. Um, I I know that uh, we are. Still hoping to hear actually from our labor council as well, who has worked with us for a longer period of time. Um, it's not unusual to have labor council that's separate, although I suppose if we were with a big law firm, it might all come from one place. Um, I I I don't know, I just think um, it it's, there are a number of uh. Municipalities and other businesses that separate those two particular practices because labor is so distinct.
Ms. Frail. May I just ask one other question?
Absolutely.
Which is that um, I'm just curious if there's a time factor here. Um, I uh, Kate mentioned that she wanted to. Post this for the next meeting and I know that this was a select board goal and I'm just curious if there is a time issue or just. We will just want to have this sort of settled, set up. As far as making a decision, that's all.
I really think it was just something that we had looked to settle. At one point, um, we had talked about making the appointment earlier. I know that the FinCom had asked for some more time to consider and um, the FinCom has actually provided some feedback. Uh, again, with respect to this appointment that that uh, generally uh. For the most part, my understanding of income would would now be uh, supportive of this appointment, having been through a couple of budget cycles. With this particular structure. Mr. Nelson.
Yes, um, I just want to say thank you for being here, Chris and the firm and, you know, what you've done. We've had some. You know, great interactions and learning, a lot of learning, which has been, you know, really great for me. Um, and I would just say, I know we're gonna have the Labor Council on and listening to uh, Mary Ann's point about being in. Um, litigation and things kind of happening right now as a town. Just considering those things and before making a final decision, I'm not necessarily saying the outcome of the litigation should determine if we stay. Or should we leave, but I think just before making a a formal final decision, kind of just listening to Labor Council and. Um, possibly getting more information from what twen- what happened in 2020 to the board and where it was constructed and where it is now is. It's a little different than it was. So just understanding the process and um. I think just uh, getting a little bit more information and I know that if we ask, we, it can be provided for us, but I think just kind of. Um, really understanding that if we commit to this, you know, what the uh, period of time is uh, to be with this law firm and. Um, understanding all the different kind of, you know, angles and things that we're going through and just. Um, you know, appreciating all the works that's been done and not saying, like Heidi said, that we necessarily have to. Start interviewing people or anything like that, but just trying to really get the whole scope of things and where we sit in and just. Yeah, I'm not suggesting going back to the drawing board. I don't know if that's what it seems like, but just really. Making sure with everything going on and what has happened in, you know, informed decisions that have been made that were just, you know. Considering those things, especially with having a new makeup of the board and 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 those things. But I appreciate all the work that, you know, that I've been a part of in listening and learning. Um, it's been really helpful.
So um, I'm gonna turn to Ms. Fitzpatrick next, but I'm gonna say that uh, as somebody who's been on the board for the while. One of my key factors in considering this is the sanity of our town manager and our town staff. And um, the fact that our town manager is um. Appreciative, comfortable, um, that that having this council makes her role more straightforward. Based on the guidance that she's being given, um, is something that I appreciate. So I'd note that, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Marion. I just wanted to note um, for Mr. Nelson that the appointment of town council. It doesn't have a term, so it's at the will of the select board. You can change your mind. So it's just, it's under the town's bylaw that you are the appointing authority and you could make a change back.
Thank you, Kate.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right, then we will uh, come back to this one. And thank you, Chris. We appreciate your being here and I know that you have yet another topic still to go with us, so.
Be back.
Different front, yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, the next item on our agenda is um, the town manager's report. I think if I'm at the right place here.
Madam Chair, the first item is to open the special town meeting warrant. I will agree with you if you say, didn't we just have town meeting last week? Cause it's what it feels like. Um, and here we are, getting ready for October, which is not that far away. Um, so uh, just briefly, what's in the warrant? This is a draft warrant. It's likely that we might have one or two others that that come up and we'll um, certainly get that to you as soon as possible. Uh, you you're scheduled to close the warrant. Um, on September 13th. So uh, if there's anything else that comes up between now and then, we'll let you know. Uh, there are several collective bargaining agreements that remain un- unresolved for FY23. I don't expect that they'll all uh, settle before uh, we need to have all of the board's uh, votes on those, but. Including them in case that that becomes possible. Similarly, the three budgets, the um, operating budget and the two enterprise fund budgets are included and we're still working out. What the need is for any transfers between line items for those. Um, our regular transportation network article is here. This is a fall article because of how. The timing is for the Commonwealth to give us the amount, give us the funds. I know that the um, the funds are down a little bit this year, the pandemic still not reached back up to the um. Uh, rideshare amounts that we had before the pandemic, but it's it's higher than last year. Um, the, as you know, the zoning bylaw for the breweries and brew pubs and microbreweries. The, uh, which the board referred to the planning board at your last meeting and which planning board will take up public hearing in early September. Then we have two appropriation articles that we're still working on, um, the amounts and the funding sources for the original buildings demolition. As of I, the board um. Uh, to update the board is that the bids came in higher than the amount that was appropriated by town meeting. We are uh, looking at options for um, going to uh. Going for a bid in hand for town meeting so that we'll know the exact amount. The uh, PBBC estimates that an additional 225,000 is needed to finish this project. But again, we'll have a bid in hand, so it won't be a guess. It'll be a known as to how we, how we're moving forward with that. Um, this is the. A project that we put off once and then um, agreed to lower, uh, the PBC agreed to lower their contingency on this project and. It just, um, it, in this bidding climate, it isn't, it isn't working out, um, not having uh, contingency. And and again, we know this has to happen. Um, my concern is if we can't fund it in October, then it's gonna get worse and. We'll just have to pay more, even more by next May because construction. Even though this is a demolition, uh, the same kind of firms. We are hopeful that a a particular firm gets through its summer projects. And is looking at something they can do in the winter that this might, uh, we might come in more favorably, but. Um, that's the amount that the PBC has estimated. And as, as I know, we've talked about, um, the PBB's also estimated about 4.4 million. Um, in additional funding needed for Emory Grover. And so we have a meeting um, coming up to talk to the finance committee and school committee and PBBC chairs on. Um, you know, just what that looks like. They are also, um, and they will have bid in hand for that project. So again, we won't, it won't be a matter of not. Of of going again on an estimated um, cost. It will be on a known cost, so. Um, both not good stories in terms of needing more money, but not, not expected, given that everything um, is going on in the world. Uh, we may have uh, debt authorization that we can rescind, working on that. And then I, um, I think the, uh, one of the ones that the board is scheduled to um, discuss tonight under your goals, which is the community energy. Uh, community energy aggregation wi- in which um, the town would help uh, create uh. A residential, non-municipal, essentially, um, residential and small business um, program where uh, taxpayers could. Get a better rate for their energy and also could consider buying up to um, greener energy sources. So we will be having. Um, more, a lot more conversation about this. We will be having the Climate Action Plan Committee in to talk about this. And we'll have a presentation on how, what this might look like. Uh, but the, it's an interesting step. Is that you can't even talk about doing it until you have a vote of town meeting, where usually we would have. The consultant on board and do all the presentations before that, but we can't get started until town meeting votes to authorize you to do it. So. Um, we'll have more on that and some timelines and some structures and um, how the program works. We are, as we like to say, Madam Chair, we are not in the first wave. We're in the second wave here. Um, we have a lot of um. Municipalities that we can look to, you and I and and really talked to Mayor Newton about this. Um, not that long ago, but it's gotta be probably six months ago. Um, they've been, you know, so they're a more recent adopter changer. Um, so that's something that we'll hear a lot more of and that that is um, that's probably the more, most interesting item. Other than the brewery zoning um, in the watch. Uh, as many questions aboard my head?
I was gonna say, there's no way that conversation with Mayor Fuller could have been six months ago, but I guess it was March, so almost six months for sure.
Yeah.
Good. Any questions from folks on the warrant? Based on what they've seen so far and we'll see if any other departments come forward with other things that they think need to be considered this fall.
Madam Chair, I moved at the board vote to open the warrant for the October 24th, 2022 special town meeting.
And is there's the. Great, second. So a motion and a second, any further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Keane? Ms. Frail?
Yes.
Mr. Barelli?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. So for everybody who's marking their calendars, October 24th. Uh, yes, I understand the Patriots are playing. Hopefully that will give us some incentive. We'll see what happens that night, but. Happens to be one of those nights. Um, the next item is uh, the memorandum of agreement for 100 West Street. Uh, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we actually don't have a memorandum of agreement that's uh, under consideration this evening. Though what draft that was in the board's book has been pulled at this point, is my understanding. Um, and we are expecting to receive a a redrafted, different version and we don't understand what. Don't know what those changes might be. Um, so at any rate, we'll see where that actually goes, but I'm going to ask. Um, I don't know if Kate wants to make any preliminary comments, otherwise I would ask Attorney Heap if he could just sort of lay out for the board. How we got to where we are. Um, and we'll just try to cover that. There's been a lot of discussion, I know, on social media about this particular item. Yeah, all the information is not uh, necessarily fully laid out for people. They need to understand, I think. Kind of how we got to where we are. So let's uh, just at least explain that for folks.
Sure, uh, my work on the uh, in terms of negotiating and and doing some of the drafting. On the memorandum of agreement for 100 West Street. Um, I think began when the applicant was proposing, uh. I guess a new special permit, not an amendment to the existing special permit um, for the project that they had permitted. Uh, a year or two ago, um, the applicant was proposing to, I think substantially change. The type of units that it's looking to provide as part of this project. Um, and approached the, the town, not the town, this, that I believe the select word. About the possibility of making a financial contribution to uh, attempt to offset the loss of. Uh, on 70 something independent living units and then I think even more. The loss of nine affordable independent living units that were permitted as part of the original project. Um, so the, the draft agreement that was in your packet, which as of, as of today. The applicant was looking to make some, some further revisions to, uh, so as you said, there's nothing uh, that's been agreed to even, even among. Uh, council um, right now. But the, that draft was meant to memorialize a uh, financial contribution from the applicant to the town. And that's it. It was not, it was not um, going to secure a uh. A permit or an approval to proceed with the new project that is entirely within the province of the planning board. And that will all be decided by the planning board, uh, when it reviews and acts on the new special permit application that it currently has pending. Um, the draft agreement that was included in the packet for, of course, it was included in the packet and intended to be put forward for, for discussion tonight. Um, was merely intended to memorialize a financial contribution from the applicant, uh, that the applicant was, was, well. Interested in, in proceeding with, in an attempt to um. Offset or partially offset the loss of the affordable units and the independent living units that were previously permitted as part of this project.
Great, thank you. I I actually want to take people back a little bit longer than that, um, even than February. So let me, let me go back a little bit further. Um, people in town will recall, uh, actually, let me go back to a very beginning. What, what Attorney Heap has referred to as the applicant, many people in town have been referring to as the developer. I'm actually going to refer to that party as the owner of the building for the last 20 years. So I think many people fail to appreciate and understand that we have a building owner for 20 years, who has been in a particular business. Uh, providing services for seniors that have been uh, some kind of nursing home related services. Who is looking to continue that business there. Um, certainly, I know that town had opportunities over the course of the pandemic. Where people inquired about that building and we kept referring anybody who inquired to the owner of the building. So I can only conclude that the owner's not planning to sell the building, that they continue uh, to wish to, to have the business that they're in. Uh, at that location and we certainly are in a part of the country that is underserved for overall facilities of that type. So I understand there's a business case to be made uh, for people who are in that area. Um, in October of 2020, what many people in town are concerned about is there was zoning that came before town meeting. That zoning before town meeting was precisely zoning, which means that it set a certain set of conditions. Um, and really the zoning was related, uh, it came about because of a request, frankly, from this particular party. Um, so, so they're not unentwined, they are related, but the request really related to dimensional requirements. And related to the addition of the ability to add additional story onto the building. So it could be four stories high rather than three. Et cetera, things like that. The exact nature of the proposal, while a proposal had been brought to the town at the time. That there actually isn't a commitment in zoning to that particular proposal. So I need to make that very clear. So the town liked the proposal that we saw. Therefore, we supported the zoning. I certainly understand how people think about that. We all liked the proposal that we saw. Um, and I think for uh, those of us who saw it in February, it was a not happy occasion. To see the new proposal that the building owner came back to us with, with a change in program for that particular location at West Street. Um. Mr. Barelli and I, at the time, were the chair and vice chair. I, I know that we had meetings with this developer or this building owner. I'm not calling him the developer, right? The building owner and we certainly expressed our displeasure at the time. Um, we strongly would have preferred and still prefer a program that includes independent living. Um, the building owner is not uh, offering that at that location. So they believe that the program that they are proposing is the right program for them and that's what they intend to implement at this point in time. As Attorney Heap said, they did, uh, when they made the revised proposal, they did include um. A remark, a, a comment that they would be open to having a community benefits discussion with the town. Community benefits is exactly the discussion that we have subsequently undertaken. Um, so it's separate from any permitting, the, it's dependent on permitting. In fact, the town will not recognize these community benefits if a permit is not granted by the town. Um, and the planning board will continue to do their diligence to figure out whether they're offering the permitting. Um, provided that the request is in line with the zoning that's been created. All right, and that discussion will take place, I think, later this week is the first uh, public um, discussion of that. Although all the documents are all available online.
I believe that's coming up next week.
Next week, okay. Um, I knew it was coming up soon. So um. So I wanted to let people know some of that background. Now, the next thing, how do we think about what a community benefits payment might look? So I wanted to let people know some of that background. Now, the next thing, how do we think about what a community benefits payment might look like? Well, that's a really interesting question. Um I can tell you that the board has received a lot of mail. That seems to suggest that um the board would be in a position of selling out the town for a payment. That's not how this came a around, all right? The answer is we engaged in a discussion about community benefits. But we do think about what might be the basis for those benefits. And frankly, although the applicant suggested to us that they would really like to provide the town with some money for quiet zone. And my understanding is that I know they've met with a number of neighbors who have said they're also interested in a quiet zone there. The select board has a quiet zone for the town on our goals, which includes multiple intersections. All right, and we will not have a quiet zone until all of them are recognized, and we've been working on a funding plan for that, so that was. An interesting piece that that uh dollars for quiet zone could be one part. Um but the main loss that all of us feel and that all of us are concerned about with this project. Is in fact the loss of those independent living units and specifically the affordable independent living units. Um it's been a priority of this board for uh a long period of time. It predates me. Where there's been a plan that has been consistently being worked on for nearly twenty years. Um to continue to improve, i- increase the number of affordable units in town, this would have been yet another place. But in fact, if we look at the number of affordable units, all right, our zoning defines, and our zoning is not unusual. That affordable units are ratioed out of independent living units. So with no independent living units, there would be no other affordable units required. So it's a loss of nine units. We considered that those nine units have a value. The state actually sets a value on those units. Um the Department uh of Housing and Community Development. Has a a value per unit in a suburban environment, and the value of those units. In a suburban environment for nine units would have been approximately two million dollars. Okay, our initial uh offer as part of negotiation was greater than two million dollars. It included a component for. For affordable housing for these units. Uh with our thought that it would go to the Affordable Housing Trust, and it included an amount that might be able to go to Quiet Zone. So all of you saw an agreement. That lists some general purposes, because by law, if we have not included any particular purpose. That we might possibly spend any of the money on, we can't spend it on that. So we write a general. Purpose that is broader to cover any possible eventuality. That's the language that you saw in the document. Um and then we negotiated, and we did not get every dollar that we asked for from the firm. Um they started in a very different place than we started. They owed us zero. I want to be clear. All right, we are, we are grateful that they're willing to engage in a discussion for community benefits. Um if the town gives them a permit, it will be our good fortune to receive money. That can go to purposes that the town needs. So I think the question for this board. Is should we have an agreement that we can come to with uh the applicant? And we'll, we'll see what changes they come back with. So we don't, we don't know whether they're looking to change dollars. Whether they're look, what they might be looking to change frankly at this point in time. Okay, but if we haven't agreed with the applicant. How does the board think about, do we want to be more specific with where monies are allocated? Are we comfortable at the present time leaving the general language, and then we will rediscover? What the actual dollars are and where they might be allocated? So I think I've covered um. I think I've covered. All the points that I had drafted down. Uh there is one last point here that is sort of separate from this discussion. I would say to the many folks in the town who wrote letters to the select board concerned. I'm about to lose my voice, sorry. Concerned that um our first reaction would be to. Sell out the town, to use the words that that came in some of the letters. I want to assure you that I'm giving you grace at this moment, all right, and that I hope you will give our board grace as well. Because I know that everyone who serves here constantly has the town of Needham's best interests. In our hearts, minds, and actions, and I would hope that you will understand that as well. So, any questions from the board? Matt?
Mary Ann, thank you for that and the recitation of the facts. I I don't know who could have done that better. Um. And I agree with you. We talked about decorum earlier in this meeting, and we just asked for that, and we asked to give that as well as a board. Um I just think it's important, you know, I I received some calls and emails, and just to reiterate, we don't control zoning. Okay, we can, when zoning comes to us, we can support it or not support it. That is in the purview of the planning board. Uh that article was drafted under the purview of the planning board. We supported it. And now, if this money did not come to us, um they would be able to go for a special permit as they are now. Uh but we would not be have, we would not get anything for it. So this money, as you said earlier, is separate from that. They're gonna have their own process. They'll have conditions, whatever they may be, that's under the jurisdiction of the planning board. Our job was to say, okay. We also felt like this is not, and we know this is not what was sold to the town at town meeting. So what can you do as an owner to mitigate that for the town? And negotiations happened, and we settled on that number, which I am comfortable with. But to suggest somehow that number is going to influence uh something at the planning board, this project gets fast-tracked or approved. Or anything of that nature uh is clearly not true insult. Um I will say on the discussion of the monies, um I would like to leave it as broad as possible with the idea that it is really going. Uh for an affordable housing component, but not meaning that it's locked in the trust for something that we might consider to be an affordable. Affordable component like transportation or last mile or getting uh people who need uh. You know subsidized transportation or subsidized units. I would like to leave that as open as possible, just with the understanding. That the idea is really some type of affordable component, either for, you know, seniors to get transportation around the town. Or, you know, uh residents, um something of that nature that will tie in uh to the money that we lost. Um or you have not the money, but that that we don't have the units that we thought we would have had. There was an aggravation among this board that is right, I share in that, but I think uh the way that we came to this decision. Uh was to help mitigate some of that aggravation, and then it will be for the planning board, what conditions they put on the project. Um and now the through public here, et cetera. So, thank you for those comments, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Matt. Kevin?
Thank you, Mary Ann. Actually, and Mary, thank you for the recitation of everything. That was very good. Appreciate it. Um and I want to second what Matt said. Um I agree with you. This has been a long road, and I am frustrated with the owner. I remember a town meeting, we all voted on this issue. And we were all very excited to do it. It felt, you know, this is the right thing to do to get independent and affordable housing. Um it's really a bitter pill that this has been switched. And I, you know, I understand the outrage and the outrage meter is at eleven, and I I understand why. Um so I would, I wish they would change it around and fix it, but uh otherwise. You know, if we can get something out of it, that would be worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus?
Yes, uh Mary Ann, thank you for summation of the history of why we got to where we are and and how we. May not be all in agreement with it, but we know that this is the best course of action for. You know, how we can use monies that will be allocated if the permit is granted to help. Do good things in our town and help people, and I think that's something that we think of in every turn and every. Moment that we come together as a board and in our collective individual lives. So to know that, you know, from the emails that we got and to suggest certain things was tough to kind of read at. Um but it's also, it's a lack of knowing what actually happened and why it happened, which I hope that people go back and listen to this. And it's, it's gonna be on the website, and people kind of reference this when making points of things that they may not understand. Um and knowing that there's no way I can imagine us doing something that wasn't in the best interest of of this town. So. You know, thank you all for being a part of this process from the beginning, you know, before our time on the board and continuing this work. And we may not be the most excited about everything, but we, you know, from anger to understanding the reality of what's happening. And processing that way and and deciding to move forward in the best way possible. So thank you.
And I see Heidi has her hand up, but I I also want to make the point. You know what? No matter what happens here, having this building come back to life. Will be valuable to all of us and have it be a contributing part of Needham. Um in the location that it's in, we may wish it was in a different form than it's going to be, but having it occupied and and active again. Will be helpful for everybody there. Heidi?
Thank you, Mary Ann, and thank you again for um taking everyone through the process. I think a lot of. Um a lot of times when things happen over a long period of time, we lose track of what has happened and and. Where we stand, and um so I appreciate that, so that everyone is working from the same set of facts. Um and I just really want to emphasize that I think that the select board here and the town manager's office and attorney heap. Has really worked um to honor the the spirit of the original. Design. Uh we're all very upset at the loss of the independent and affordable units. But to allow any benefit to the town um to slip away out of. Some sort of um misunderstanding of a principled stand. Um I think would do the town a disservice, and I I just want to say that in my short time on this like word, I have found. That these people in front of us here to be really diligent um and and dedicated public servants. Who really do their best in every instance to. Um benefit the town, and that's their only interest. So I'd like to invite, I think, uh the public. To to take a moment when you have questions or when you see something that you don't like. To instead start with a question to say, there's something I don't understand here. It doesn't seem right to me. I'd like to ask. What led us here? Because I feel like sometimes we say, I don't like what's happening here and jump to assumptions that. Make it difficult for everyone to do the best for the town. That's all everyone's trying to do. So I really just want to say that I appreciate the effort that's been put in on the work on this. Potential agreement, and we'll see where it goes. Um everyone is trying to make it come out as best as possible. Thank you.
And 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 I'm gonna say, I think the planning board will be making similar efforts within the jurisdiction that they have. Um so um we all hope that it has a reasonable outcome. I think I I'm hopeful that we will see a community benefits agreement coming back before this board. Um but there will be hopefully more to come on that front, and um we'll see what happens next. So thank you, everyone. Uh the next item that we have is our goals. I'm gonna turn it over to Kate to take us through the goals, because there's a lot of them.
Oh, yes, Madam Chair. So I'm not sure what the the point was to discuss the compilation. That the board uh talked about at your last meeting, um to think about whether there was anything that needed to be added or subtracted. Um based on, you know, maybe my misunderstanding of um putting it down on paper. And then we had also talked about whether the board wanted to um specifically identify any more goals. You did a couple that were um intentionally going to be at the second half of the two-year goal cycle. Um I know the hour is late, and I'm not sure that uh as the board did four and a half hours of it last week. Um it makes the most sense, Madam Chair, to walk through all of them. Um there may be, maybe board members have a particular few they wanna to highlight and. Um maybe during the month of August, all the members could get back to me on, you know, thinking about if there's something that needs to be nuanced. Um or you have ideas of timing on some of them. Um we we aren't scheduled to vote until September on the on the particular roles. I just, I do want to commend the board for taking. Um so much feedback from so many people, um including staff and yourselves. Um and synthesizing it. I would also note, there's fifty-nine of them. Um and by sort of our very initial estimate, thirteen of them are pretty heavy lifts, so. Um and that mean there's probably, you know, another fifteen that are only sort of heavy, so um. You know, they they don't all weigh against each other, but um the more that uh the more items, the the thirteen that I mentioned. Um clearly have have to go to town meeting, and then anything that's go to town meeting, it's sort of a, an eighteen-month cycle of getting it through. Um so those are, that's um and some of them are are either one-offs that we can. That get done fairly quickly, and some of them are really um in a lot of ways setting up a. A really long-term strategy or a long-term policy that don't require initial uh investment in a lot of times. Going on and on. Madam Chair, see what your reaction is.
So I think all that is good, Kate. I think um I I will say for people, one of the things that the select board did this year was we went out. To other committees and departments and asked them for input on our goals. Um that yielded a number of additional areas that we did discuss a week at our goal setting. And hopefully you can see how those items were reflected uh in the goals that are here. Um I do feel like we said yes to way more than we said no to, and and Kate and uh crew kind of groaned. Every time we said yes, uh so we will be trying to figure out, as Kate indicated, how we can make. Um these ten pounds fit in our five-pound sack and exactly what fits in the five-pound sack for next year. But for those who have been paying attention to select board goals for a while. Uh you know that the staff in Needham does an absolutely amazing and outstanding job. And um the number of items in any given year that we have succeeded and checking off our list and moving forward for our citizens. Is always enormous. Um and I'm confident, even with the heavy lift items, that we will do the same this year. Um moving forward. Um how does the board feel? Are there a few you would like to talk about, or shall we actually hold? Uh more of this discussion for September? Matt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of observations, and I remember last year when I was chair, I think we let off the discussion saying. You know, it's, if you're gonna add something new to this, right, you gotta ask to be extremely important, and it was COVID times. So I think this time, we're much more like, okay, we're kind of moving forward. We're catching up on a lot of things, but it is a large list. I know that. You know, we have a matrices that we can use. I would like to see if there's some way to get a ranking on these. And I'm thinking in the future, when we have a goal session, maybe we have a two-year kind of goal like we do with capital planning and say, okay, this year. And this will put to next year, and that'll give us a little more clarity, because I'm looking at some of these, and I. I left in with the heavy lifts, I can see what they are, but I'd like to get some recommendation from um staff on kind of how we categorize these. I will say, one of the discussions we had was the elected versus appointed positions, and. I know we talked about kind of the low-hanging fruit. I just wanted to bring it up tonight. Um and there was some discussion on town clerk. And I think there was kind of, we we didn't really reach consensus on that. We said we'd talk about it. I think I made my feelings known that I think. There's certain uh like assessors or constable or the other um mentioned items that. Should be appointed, but I think when it comes to the town clerk, there's going to be a lot of bandwidth and discussion. I'll tell you, Ryan, I'm against it. You know, I'd like to set as an elected position, but I think there's gonna be a lot of issues kind of going into town meeting for trying to. Get that item off our goals. So I would just like to, I guess, ask the board, ask you, Madam Chair, if there's a way to say, okay. That discussion on the town clerk, we can be put off a year um and really focus on. The ones that I think that we would have a much easier time in lighter workload, working through to the town meeting, because I think that's ultimately the goal. And I wouldn't want to see it sidetracked with a long debate and discussion on that item.
Um so I'm I'm supportive of that. I think I indicated that the other day, uh deferring that particular item. Um I think we have more work to do, and um. So so I would support that. I mean, it's up to other people. Just for members of the public listening to this discussion. What they should know or what they may not recall is that the suggestion for which. Um positions we should look at that are currently elected, that should move to being appointed in some way, shape, or form. Um comes from some work that was done by the League of Women Voters, who took and did the research, spoke to a number of people, researched practices in other towns. And cities to try to figure out what uh what recommendations they could make, and that was one of the recommendations for something that we should look at. And we concurred broadly, which is why it made it onto the goal list, but for that particular position. I can certainly support deferring that position for the time being. Any other, any other comments? Mr. Keen?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm comfortable with that for now. That sounds like. We got, this is a huge list. And I'm starting to get very nervous about it. Yeah.
So, so it is a large list, but I think, and, and to Mr. Brawley's point. You know, not all of these will be completed this year. Some of them do say, say things like evaluate. Evaluate doesn't mean you've made the decision and implemented it. All in one year, but, but there are pieces where we expect to learn some so that we can form, inform. What actions the town should consider or might look at taking in the future and. There's things to know. Okay. But I, I certainly appreciate all the input that we received and. There are some items that are on this list that I very much look forward to, to hoping and seeing that they happen. Like our funding for an arts and culture strategic plan. I, I keep hoping that we're gonna get our money for public art somewhere baked into, to a system, so. One of these days, we'll get there. If there's no other questions, then we will come back to this in September. Kate, I don't know if you are thinking with your staff, anything that helps us. We talked about a waiting system. To understand sort of which ones you're, you're ranking in the heavy lift and which ones might be in the moderate lift. I do think that information would be helpful to the board just to. Be sure that we fully appreciate what we're taking on. What we're taking on, which means the royal we, largely you and staff taking on. So I thank you for that.
We did come up with a ma- matrix that. We need to continue to refine, but I do think that, you know, highlighting the ones that have to go to, you know, for instance. If it's going to, if, if the goal is to get to town meeting in May of twenty-three. Right, that's just, it's an obvious, you know, it's, it's gonna take more work then, so we'll highlight some of those and give you a good sense.
Great. Any other questions from the board? I, I know that I had a chance to read through it quickly. I had one small comment that I gave to Kate. If there is other feedback that you have or things that you realized didn't quite make it to a place where you thought it was going to show up. Then if you can please get that feedback into Kate and Katie, that would be fabulous.
If I could, Madam Chair, I just wanted to remind also, many items are in the bulleted guiding principles. Or we have a separate document called budget priorities that you vote in December. So there are items, for instance. Specific phone systems and buildings that aren't on the goals, but they're in the funding priority, budget priority list. So. If, if individual board and committee members don't see something that they've, that they've recommended, it's probably either in a guiding principle or a budget priority. Because I think we accommodated, you know, many of those items.
Okay. Alright, that brings us to the town manager report. Is there other news, Kate?
I, I think we've had enough news.
You think we've had enough news? Great. The next item on our agenda is the town manager performance evaluation. I'm actually gonna turn to Matt since he was, as, as the, the former board chair, he has the responsibility for. Conducting that on the board's behalf and working with all of us to create our performance review for the town manager.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. So. I received, as you know, evaluations from each of you and included myself in there and came up with a. Consensus document of the evaluation. Excellent marks, Kate, and I sat with Kate and went over it. And really just exemplary and just to show of what a strong and qualified town manager that we have. I did note that, I remember years ago, we've changed this document and it used to be all, it was hard to. The moderate was almost like a C, you know, to meet the expectation was like a bad thing. And so it was always like AAA, Kate deserved it. I'm not saying that, but I think with this one. When you have meets expectations, that's still an amazing thing to say. And then exceeds is even, you know, double that. So these marks are all, you know. One, a couple ends, but mostly M pluses and E's and E minuses. And those come from that if they were, you know, three E's and two M's that kind of averaged them. To, to kind of get, show where we were on the chart. But. Kate, you know, I said this to you when we met, again, your leadership throughout the pandemic. Throughout my time on the board has just been terrific, terrific to work with, very open. And we wouldn't be here without that leadership from, from you. You have to deal with all five of us and then you have a town to deal with and you have citizens to deal with the. So it's a lot, a lot to deal with and you just do it and you really, you set the bar for that. So I think this report shows that. And I want to thank you. It's nice to deliver some positive news this evening.
Terrific. Thank you. Marcus.
Yeah, Bill and I, what Matt said, I know I'm needy at times. So Kate, it is appreciated. That you are responsive, that you're here to help, no matter if you're here or, you know, out of town or things that come up. So appreciate your leadership and what you do for your staff and with your staff and how together you serve this town in a way that. You know, we've been proud of and in the short time that I've been on the board, it's been, you know, a lot of learning and a lot of growing. And a lot of just, you know, building trust, you know, which is something that is extremely important in having good faith in the work that you do. So. Thank you for that and yeah, most deserving.
Thank you. Up, Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to echo that. Kate, you've been fantastic. It's been great to learn about this town. It's been, it's been a brilliant job you've done. Thanks very much.
So I, I'm going. Here I go. I'm gonna conclude by thanking Kate for all the care that she has for all of her staff. And for everybody in town. To me, Kate is really sort of the epitome of servant leadership. And I am grateful for the fact that she has in fact dedicated her career. To serving the town of Needham and she has been here in every way, shape and form for us, day in and day out. And I'm wishing you a very well-deserved vacation where you leave us all behind for a while and take a rest. So, we need you back.
Thank you, Mary Ann, and thank you, everybody. I just want to really thank you for your confidence in me, but also in the amazing. Staff that you have out there every day working for the taxpayers of the town. They're out there now, they'll be out there tomorrow at six, as you heard. In the heat and in the snow and in, in difficult circumstances and, you know, we, we all do it. Because we like to make that difference in the, the lives of people and I wouldn't have it any other way. So thank you.
And with that, Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to approve the town manager consensus evaluation overview document dated July thirty-first. Twenty twenty-two and authorize a merit award payment in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
I get that emotion.
Alright, if there is no further discussion, then Mr. Nelson.
Absolutely.
Mr. Keen. Ms. Braille.
Yes, please.
Mr. Brawley.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Kate. Our heartfelt thanks there. The next item that we have is a board discussion of the federal lawsuit. So the board has committed to keeping the town updated about the lawsuit that's been filed against us. In the, between the Needham Police and Mr. Marvin Henry. And so I just wanted to provide that latest update to you since there is new information since the last time this board provided an update. This is about the status of the lawsuit fired by Mr. Marvin Henry against the town of Needham and several members of the Needham Police Department arising from his detention. On January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. The lawsuit was filed by Mr. Henry's attorneys on July seventh, twenty twenty-one. In the United States District Court for the District of Massachusetts alleging various civil rights and tort claims. The case is in the discovery phase with the parties exchanging documents and witness deposition being conducted. The court recently extended the fact discovery deadlines until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. A court status conference is presently set for the first week in October. Wherein the court will address any discovery issues and set further schedule for expert disclosures, dispositive motion practice. And trial. So that is the statement that we have. When we have more information, we will let the town know. That brings us to committee reports. I have not been told that anyone has a committee report this evening, but I'll ask. And if there are no committee reports, then I would welcome a motion to adjourn. What's the rush? Kevin ate dinner. Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Keen. Ms. Braille.
Yes.
Mr. Brawley.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.